Yeah, give me a second. Noah, it's.
I know, I know.
He's ready.
Is that good?
I'm here.
Okay, very good. All right.
That's good.
I will now call this City Council Regular Session, City of Lake City Meeting of April 21st to order. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance and invocation by Vice Mayor Young. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting God, we bow before you right now, oh God, first to tell you thank you. We thank you, oh God, that you've allowed us another opportunity, oh God, to gather here to handle the business of the city. We ask, oh God, that you just clear our minds, oh God, and our hearts, that we put the best interests of the city on the table right now, oh God, and that we make those choices that are for our city, the best for our city. We ask, oh God, that you just bless each person in here and family. Please put your arms around our first responders. Bless them and their families, oh God. And then, oh God, Officer Hardison, bless him, oh God, heal him, oh God, touch him, oh God, just comfort him and his family, oh God, in this time. We just asked, oh God, that you just continue to bless us as you have, and we know that you will bless us more abundantly. Just keep our minds in this meeting, oh God, that we don't veer off, oh God, just have Thine own way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jernigan.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Young.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
City Manager Rosentholz.
Here.
City Attorney Martin.
Here.
Chief Butler.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meetings since 1968. The city code has prohibited any person from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitutes boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There is only one approved manner of addressing the city council, and that is to be recognized and to speak from the podium. As a reminder, persons are not to openly carry a handgun or carry a concealed weapon or firearm while the governing body is meeting. Failure to abide by these rules of decorum will result in removal from the meeting. I would also ask that you only address the items that we are currently on, on the agenda, as well as reinforce, since we do have a full room tonight, please do not disrupt from the audience. And we will begin with approval of the agenda.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign? All right. Onto proclamations. We do have a proclamation this week for Youth Leadership Week, and it looks like we have some folks, so I'll read it and then we'll take a photo. Right after. All right. Proclamation of the City of Lake City for Youth Leadership Week, April 24th to the 30th of 2025. Whereas, the annual celebration of National Student Leadership Week, NSLW, began on a national level in 1972 by President Pro- Presidential Proclamation. And whereas, students across the entire city of Lake City in schools that are public, private, and in-home settings demonstrate leadership in the classroom while soaring above academic expectations and leadership capacities with academic, social, athletic, and community groups. And whereas, student leaders make significant contributions to the climate and culture of their schools and communities, and it is important to celebrate their individual and collective efforts. And whereas, we believe students have earned their right to be recognized for the entire week of April 2024th to the 30th of 2025. Now, therefore, I, Noah Walker, Mayor of the City of Lake City, Florida, do hereby proclaim this week of April 24th to the 30th, 2025, as Youth Leadership Week, joining the celebration of youth leaders sponsored by our Community Cares, Inc., and Community Partners, and encourage citizens, businesses, organizations, and government agencies to join in acknowledging the success of youth leadership throughout the community.
So thank you all very much. 2025, we've scheduled a lot of fun activities for young leaders in three counties. And so, of the activities that they'll be participating in includes a canoe competition between Columbia, Hamilton, and Swanee Counties. So we're excited for that. It's on Saturday. We invite you all to come out. Whether or not you canoe, there will be barbecue and good food. They have their kickoff on Thursday at Teen Town, and the police department will provide the substance abuse prevention class that they've been providing to them, instruction for now probably three or four months. On Friday, they'll spend some time team-building. Sunday, they have a youth festival and cook-off. We have a lot of chefs, young chefs. So we're gonna have a cook-off and festival, give them an opportunity to showcase some of their talents at Darby Pavilion at Wilson Park. We invite you all to come out and enjoy some of those activities, some music, some chess, and have fun getting to know our young people. On the 30th, well, there are two events. Hidden in plain sight is a substance abuse workshop that'll be held for adults. And then on the 30th, they will be at the Blanche Hotel for their award ceremony, have an opportunity to meet officials throughout the tri-county area. And we will just congratulate them and encourage them to be future great stewards of our community. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. That was our only proclamation of the night, so we'll go ahead and move on to public participation and persons wishing to address the council. We only have one signed up for this, Mr. Lilker, that is you.
Thank you, Your Honor, Stu Lilker, Columbia County Observer. I just have as an observation, and I'm trying to get some understanding. Later on this evening, the city manager is on the agenda for discussion and possible action in-house city attorney. I will discuss that when that item comes up on the agenda later on this evening. I'll put it in a slip. But this has been a problem not only here but in other places, small governments. What's the possible action? Doesn't say. There's a little bit of studies, nothing really intense in the city agenda. I'm not in favor of this, but that's neither here nor there. But what is the possible action? Is the possible action to mug the public? And tonight, without any notice, Don Rosentholz, we're gonna find out, suddenly discovered in the city charter that it was changed during the last charter-changing. And I spoke to former City Councilman Sampson about this today. The part that the citizens voted on that allows them in the charter, because this is in the charter, and I didn't see a word about that in the agenda, was changed at the last city charter convention of the city. That was never there. Mr. Sampson recalled that he was gonna discuss this with Mr. Cobeline, who is now a judge, probably to the detriment of most people that appear in front of him. But he's now a judge, former city attorney. That part, that discussion, that the public approved, was never part of the city charter redoing. Somehow it got in there. Apparently, city attorney, then Cobeline, now Judge Cobeline, was gonna play some kind of audio regarding that item, but never did. So I think that's problematic, because what's in the charter never happened. What is also problematic is the possible action that you're asking the city council to take. How is the public supposed to know what the possible action is? Except if it's one minute before the board, or 30 seconds, and now the public knows. You guys may wanna use this as a discussion workshop item. My suggestion is, to be fair to the city attorney, city council, and the public, that this be just a discussion item, because nobody knows what the action is. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Lilker. When we do get to that item, we'll define the action and then open public comment for anybody to speak to it. Mr. Brown, you indicated that you wanted to also speak during public comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for not putting it down. I guess I just overlooked it. On yesterday, Easter day, I had the opportunity to attend three different, four different church services. And after church, about 6 o'clock, I decided to ride out to Almaty Park, that I normally just ride through just to see what was going on. And I posted some of the pictures. I was so impressed and felt so good about what I saw. Dress good, they was having a good time, they was eating food, they were dancing, peaceful. Everything was nice. I really, really thought it was gonna end up being a wonderful day. Then the incident happened late in the evening, and it kinda put a light on it. I raised that issue because I just want the city government to understand that 99.9% of those people that are out there were not violating the law. They were following the police officer's instruction, Trevor was moving good, the police department did an excellent job. Central Street, it was like rolling around the park. It took me 20 minutes to get from Baskin Ross over to Washington Street. But I didn't mind, because I just was watching, and they were, hey, pop, I mean, it made me feel good. And I bring this up, so I just don't want the incident that happened involving the shooting of the police officer to put a light, a dark cloud over the whole event. Because that's unfair to the people who was out there. You know, there's nothing wrong with people coming to town, there's nothing wrong with being out at Almaty Park. That's what they do, you know. And I certainly don't want that to be discouraged. You know, I posted this morning, asking people to pray for the officer, you know, it was a bad situation. But at the same token, I don't want the community to take the idea that, oh, it's a bunch of thugs out of a bunch of hooligans, because that was not the case. It was nice cars, they were riding motorcycles, you know, and you got films of it. And so, just as we plan for the future and talk about this in your meetings, please know that some of those same people that are out there, they was in church yesterday morning. You know, those were the people that came from the club out to the park. They was in Easter services throughout the community. Some of them went home, changed clothes, and they came to the park. They walked up and down the street, having a good time. Obviously, some people were drinking liquor, some people were smoking reefer, you can see it. But that's what happened at those kind of gatherings. And so, I would encourage this local government not to get the impression that, oh, it's a bad situation at Almaty Park, because that was not the case. As far as I'm concerned, it was an isolated incident. You know, it's almost like being at a football game. I used to go to Jaguars, I had Jaguars season ticket over 13 years. When somebody got shot in the parking lot outside a Jaguar football game, they didn't stop having Jaguar football games. They just did something to deal with it coming to the future. I'm almost certain, as heinous and as violent that was up in Florida State, they're not gonna cancel classes. They're gonna keep doing it, you know, so I say that to say that, don't throw that park under the bus. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. That's all I have signed up for public comment, so we'll close public participation at this time. We will move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign? All right. Moving on from the consent agenda, we are now on our presentations, and we are starting with a presentation by Katie Hall, the General Manager and CEO of the Florida Gas Utility Natural Gas Financing Hedging PowerPoint.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie is with us from Florida Gas Utility, as we talked about two weeks ago. We were gonna bring this up in two presentations. Basically, what this is, is the second part of that. We routinely do several things to keep our prices low in the utility industry, and this is one of them. So we are definitely in favor of this from the natural gas side, and I'll let her speak to the details.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Welcome back, Ms. Hall.
Thank you again for having me. Hopefully, you remember me from two years ago when we talked about the discounted gas transaction. And just as they said, we're gonna talk about financial hedging today. So feel free to stop me along the way, because I know this can be a little bit of a tricky subject, so please feel free to ask questions as we go. So what is hedging? Hedging is a type of investment that helps reduce the risk of adverse price. So that's a very important thing. We're gonna talk about this over and over. This is not an attempt to beat a market, it's an attempt to reduce the risk here. So virtually any commodity can be hedged. Today, we're gonna talk about natural gas, but pick any widget you want, it can probably be hedged. And there's several products available, but we're gonna focus just today on futures contracts and call options, and try to keep it as simple as we can, and again, we'll talk about that a little bit further in this presentation. So why do we hedge? Again, this is probably the most important slide here. Hedging is not an attempt to beat the market. We're not trying to get the lowest price available, we're trying to have the most stable price. We're trying to reduce that volatility. Think of it as an insurance policy. You pay for that insurance every year, are you upset if your house doesn't burn down? No, you wanna make sure you're protecting yourself from the risk. So that's what this is. It's to help you protect yourself from the volatility. When should we hedge? Hedging, unfortunately, a lot of people or a lot of cities hedge once the price, the market starts to run away from them, and they panic, and they say, how do we stop the bleeding? How do we protect ourselves from this? That is probably the exact opposite time of when you should hedge. And right now, when prices are lower and stable, this is when you should hedge. And so, we're gonna talk about a program that's an ongoing, rolling hedging program, so that you're not being reactive to the market, you're establishing your goals regardless of what the market is doing. And so, right now, while prices are low and stable, that's why this is a really good time to look at this. All right, so prices right now are between $3 and $4 a decotherm. That's the unit we buy gas in, that's 10 thermes, which is probably what you all are familiar with for units. The problem is, is we see a couple things coming down the pipeline, no pun intended, of why we think prices might be impacted. So the first one on here is more LNG. You've hopefully heard about this in the news. LNG is liquefied natural gas. They're starting to use it for ships, they're starting to use it for rocket ships, they're using it for long-haul trucking. Let's put this in perspective, there's several LNG facilities being built in Florida right now. One LNG facility can use as much as half of the state of Florida uses every day. It's a lot of gas, and there are multiple facilities being built. They're not all that big, but we're talking about a lot of demand that is gonna be coming on the scene in the next two to three years. There's not a supply issue. We have plenty of supply in the wells. The problem is, is we don't have the infrastructure to get it from the wells to the demand. So that's gonna be a little bit of a backlog to get it there. It's probably gonna be a year or two to catch up on that. And so, that's where I see that we're gonna be restricted, and we're gonna have this imbalance in the market, which is gonna cause some volatility. Additionally, we have, right now, we have bottlenecks and cuts, so that means the pipe cannot get any bigger than what it is. So there are certain spots that the pipe is what it is, so you can only get so much gas. So when you have really hot days where they're burning a lot of gas for electricity, or really cold days in the winter, you just can't get any more gas through the pipe. And so, again, we're really subjective still to weather, which a lot of people have thought has gone away, but we are still susceptible to that. So here's what the current NYMEX, so this is when we look at the future, this is what right now you can buy it on. So on the left side is a one-year curve, on the right side is just a three-year projection of the same curve. The spikes in the winter are normal, we see that all the time, we don't get excited about that. What I do get excited about is you can see that over the three years, it's actually trending down. I will probably bet my last dollar that that is not what happens when we actually get there. So what that means is, right now, to lock out further in the future is a great opportunity, because I really think those prices are actually gonna go up. So right now, the most foreseeable months are not as appealing, but as we look further out, those are great prices to lock in. I mean, you're talking $3 gas, that's 30 cents a therm. That is wonderful pricing. So this just shows it in a little bit different light. On the left side, that blue squiggly line is the actual market prices. You can see they've been trending up. On the right-hand side of that graph, the darker, that orange color, is what it looked like about a year ago. The green line is this last fall, and that yellowish line is February of this year. All we're trying to point out is that as you get closer to the more current months, you see that price higher, right? There's a bigger spread, but they ultimately all end up in the same place. So what we're saying is, the further out you can lock in some of these prices, you'll reduce some of that volatility. That's all we're trying to point out there. So products. As I mentioned in the beginning, there are several products available. We're just gonna talk about two today. So the two that we recommend is giving us the authority to do futures contracts or call options. And we're gonna show you what that looks like. The futures contract is setting the price. That's the price you pay, whatever you set. A call option is like a ceiling, so you'll never pay more than that, but if the price comes down, you can get the benefit of that cheaper price. And so, that might be appealing when we do see some volatility in the market. You can protect yourself from those higher prices. So what does that look like? Here's two examples of it. The left side is a futures contract, so this blue line is what the market actually did. The yellow line is your futures product. So you can see that's the price you pay regardless. On the right side is a call option, so the blue line again is that same market, the yellow line is your ceiling. So when the prices come below that, you get the benefit of that lower price, but you're protected from the upside risk. So let's look at it from what actually happened. This was from 2022, we call it the basis blowout. This is when most people had that knee-jerk reaction to stop the bleeding. So on the left side, again, this is if you would have locked in a futures contract at $7.50. You can see the market jumped all over the place, but you always paid 7.50. On the right-hand side would have been if a call option was in place. So you set that ceiling a little bit higher than your futures, so in this case, say $8. So you would have never paid more than $8, but when the prices came down, you got the benefit of that lower price. Now, everybody usually asks me, is why did it come down so much? When we had those dips, anecdotally, there was an LNG explosion that happened in Texas, and that facility used about half of the much as what Florida does on any given day. So all of a sudden, we had this massive increase in supply that wasn't expected. So some of those little dips is that supplies, or the company said, oh, it wasn't that much damage, we'll be right back online. Prices started to come back up, and then they said, no, just kidding, and it went back down. So we were literally seeing the spikes in the market based on what this one facility was saying. So naturally, that call option, because you have that luxury of getting the lower prices, there is a premium associated with that. So, but the premium is not as impactful as you might think. It's actually pretty low. So right now, a current strip for a futures contract is about 4.33. You wanna lock in your call option a little bit higher than that. So we gave you a couple examples here. We gave you 4.50, $5, 5.50, just to kinda show you the magnitude of the further away from a futures contract that you go, the premium will adjust. So if you're closer to that futures contract, you have a little bit higher premium, and as you get further away from it, you have a lower premium. So when you guys bill in thermes, you're talking about a penny and a half per therm to have this protection. So this is a really good option when the gas prices are a little bit higher. When you have more of an opportunity for prices to come down, a call option is great. If prices are low, then it doesn't make sense to do a call option, because the reality of the prices going down are probably pretty slim. So the quantity, I guess my circles didn't show up on here, but it should be 75% for 12 months out, 50% 24 months out, and 25% for three years out. Again, that's just a rolling program, so as you get a year out from now, you would stack them on top of each other so that at any given time, you can have up to about 75% hedged in that current year. This is what it looks like compared to the city's average daily usage, so you can just see 75%, 50%, 25%. So you still have a lot of room in the spot market. The strike price of when we would lock in any of these products is based on the city's budget, so this is really important. Again, this is not to get the lowest price, it's to meet the goals of the city. So if we can lock in your budgeted price or below that, that's a really good deal for your customers. That means your residents that maybe have fixed income, they can budget accordingly. Your commercial customers, if they're trying to price their per ton of asphalt, or their power pole, or their fertilizer, they know exactly what the prices are, and they can price their products accordingly. So again, this is all for stability. These are a couple things to note. Again, we're asking for a rolling program. You give us parameters, and then we would reach out to Mr. Brown or the city manager and say, here's exactly when the market hits our three goals here, and as soon as it does, and we think it's a good price, he can execute it. Because think of the stock market, it moves by the minute. So we don't have the luxury of saying, hey, we need, the prices look really good, let's set up a council meeting, and in two to three weeks from now, we maybe get this approved. We need to be able to move quickly. So what we're asking for is, give us parameters to operate within, and when we like what the market looks like, we can execute it quickly. And we saw this happen actually two weeks ago when the tariff announcements came out. That morning, we were at, we were sitting at about 4.17, we had one of our cities trying to get us to 4.11 to lock it in. We said, let's sit tight, let's watch it. Came out with they were imposing tariffs on all the countries, the market dropped, as did the stock market. We checked it again, prices came down to 3.73. We locked it in, we went to lunch. At lunch, we get the notifications that all tariffs were paused for 90 days. Guess what? Prices went right back up. So we literally had a two-hour window that we got lucky, right? So that's what we're asking for, is give us the parameters, and we can watch those things happen. We can watch LNG happen, we can watch the market, we can watch the stuff, and we can move when it makes sense. And you can terminate these at any time, so you will not locked in if you say yes tonight. We can terminate at any time. So the recommendation is to approve this rolling hedging program. Again, these are the three parameters set, so the products would be futures contracts or call options, and associated premiums with that. The quantity is 75% one year out, 50% two years out, and up to 25% three years out. Again, these are up too. That doesn't mean we have to go lock this in tomorrow for the full amount. We can stack them on accordingly, and our strike price would be based on the city's budget. It would be at or below that. Are there any questions?
Oh, I don't think so. Councilmembers, any questions for Ms. Hall?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Katie. All right. And now, we have our second presentation of the night with Gallagher Consulting Services for Property and Casualty Insurance. And Ms. Billy Joe's not here tonight, so, gentlemen, you'll have to introduce yourselves.
Well, good evening. What an exciting night. You learn hedging and insurance in the same night, so congratulations. My name's Justin Terry. I am an area senior vice president with Gallagher. I'm out of our Jacksonville office. I've spent 25 years in the property casualty insurance business as an insurance agent consultant, and this is my partner.
Yeah, I'm JD Carles. I'm out of our Lake City office here. I work on the health and welfare side. Been with Gallagher about six years and worked with the city now for going on three years.
So this time last year, JD called me and said, hey, you know, we've been working with the city of Lake City, and we've had a lot of success with their employee benefit program, and they're asking, can we help them do the same type of stuff with their property casualty program? I said, it's a good question. I don't know. Let's explore. So we've spent the better part of the year, 12 months, assessing kinda where things are. And just to give you a little bit of background on Gallagher, we are a large publicly traded company. We're, JD and I are two of about 52,000 people that do what we do across the world. Our company, the market cap is the total value of a publicly traded company, and just to give you some sense of size, our market cap, the last time I checked, was about that of Ford and General Motors combined. So we're a big, big company. Big doesn't mean better necessarily. Big just means a lot of access to data and a lot of information with which to evaluate opportunities and market capacity to deliver results for our clients. And so, that's all I would think about when I think about big. There's a lot of numbers on the screen, but I don't really intend to walk you through them all. I'll let JD start with kinda his results, because I think it- Um, I'll I'll let J D start with kind of his results because I think it gives some clarity and some context for why we think we can help you on the property casualty side.
Yeah, so we began uh working with the city in twenty twenty-two um with one of the former um HR directors as a referral from the city of Live Oak, which is also one of our clients. They said, hey, can y'all contact the city, they're having some compliance issues. So we came over, had a discussion um with the current HR director at that time, discovered that there were some some compliance issues, and we were able to give them some resources to to uh to to take care of those issues as well. In that discussion, we discovered that there was a longstanding um relationship with F M I T directly. Um, over fifteen years. That being said, there was no broker involved with that, so it was a direct F um direct with F M I T, meaning that you just received your renewals, whatever they might be, there was no negotiation, they just, you accepted them because you were with the the insurance trust. As we looked at that, we said, hey, we use, we can help with this. We can go to the market, create some competition within the market to who wants your business. So we did that. Excuse me. Once we did that, we went to multiple different carriers, brought back multiple different quotes, and decided that uh Florida Blue was going to be the correct person or correct company to go with. When seeing that, there was about a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar savings roughly that we were able to save first year with uh with moving from the Florida Municipal Trust to Florida Blue. That being said, also, some of the compliance issues that we were discussing earlier had to do with the opt-out program that the city had in place. It was a cash opt-out program, and there were some compliance issues on just paying cash to to the employees. So what we did was we came together with Angie and a few others and said, let's create a program that we can keep the opt-out program, but we can also provide some benefit that's going to keep you in compliance. So we revamped that as well, creating an additional savings for the city. I don't remember the exact number on that, but it was pretty significant as well. So as you can see there, uh Gallagher's compensation is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but we were able to save four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So it creates about a four-to-one savings that we were able to to create that that first year. And I say approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars because it fluctuates depending on um enrollment in the programs and the the amount of employees that the city has. Some of the other things that we were able to do were improve staff and employee administrative efficiencies. We were able to bring in some technologies that were able to um for the HR staff to be able to onboard and terminate employees with a much faster speed. Uh, there was, it took away the majority of the manual processes where they were having to put into multiple different carriers, multiple different websites, things like that, they were able to put it into one website, and it was able to feed out to multiple different carriers at that time. And we did this by working with some of the carriers on some of their programs that they have that doesn't cost the city anything, we were able to utilize some of those. We've also worked with Billy Joe to figure out the long and short-term goals for the city, and that's how we will continue to work with them to make sure that the city meets all of the goals that they've set for themselves. I'm going to turn it back over to Justin now.
Thank you, J D. So only only share that, share a little bit of a backdrop of kind of our already existing relationship with the city. And what I'll I'll walk you through now is kind of what we found in our twelve months of kind of conversations with 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 your your staff. Um, just like on the employee benefits, you've got over a fifteen-year, as far as we can tell, direct relationship with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. This means your staff gets a renewal, works through a renewal process with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and pays what they charge you. Um, an underwriter's job, any underwriter's job, is to determine how to get the most premium they can for the risk. Nobody knows next year whether the wind's going to blow or not, they don't know if you are going to be involved in a in 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 a crisis, in a in a bad situation, but they do know how much premium they get, and their job generally is to get what they think they can. Now, your staff, I think they're 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 very interested in in helping the city, but they're they're limited in in terms of their skills, experience, tools, and resources to bid the marketplace. So you've got a fifteen-year track record with no notable competitive bids on your insurance program, and we're proposing to come in and help you with that, and basically facilitate that process for you. We're not saying we need to change carriers. A lot of times, we find that when you go out and create competition, the incumbent carrier sometimes drops their price because they know they're going to have marked competitive alternatives to to consider, and they might not want to lose your business. I I think that's likely to to happen here. But there are also two other major trusts in the state of Florida that would also like to bid for your business, but what we've got to do is we've got to go out and create a competition that 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 puts all the underwriting data in their hands to allow them to underwrite the risk and make decisions about how to quote it. And again, that's our skill set, you have a great staff, they're they're doing good jobs, but nobody in your on your staff has that skill set, and I don't really see any municipalities or any private businesses that go out and do this on their own. This is almost always done by somebody like us. So again, we looked at it, you're spending about one point seven five million dollars currently on your property casualty insurance, it's gone up substantially the last couple of years. Um, and 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 again, we're going to go out, we're proposing to go out and create a competitive process, help your staff get the data in line to make it underwritable and get it out to competition. Um, what do we see when we do that type of process? We can't guarantee you anything. I mean, just kind of like the markets, we we don't know where they're going to go, we don't know what's going to happen necessarily three months from now, six months from now. But traditionally, when we do this, and we do an awful lot of it, if if somebody hadn't been out to a competitive bid in in three to five years, we typically see a ten to thirty percent cost savings. So you're spending a million seven fifty, if we're on the low end of that range, we hope to save at least a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars by going through this competitive evaluation. Um, there is a uh, because of the timing, yours is an October first renewal. It really needs to be out in the market in the next thirty to forty-five days in order to get competitive bids in in time for that October first renewal. We have um shared with you, Indian River County is a a municipality that did a competitive bid of of consultants just like us. Um, and and that that competitive bid has been approved for piggybacking only in the interest of time to allow you to to consider engaging us in that process. And that that bid was a a five-year contract, but it's one year at the time, optionally renewable at your discretion. So if at the end of one year, you don't feel like we did a good job, don't feel like it was worth it, you don't have to renew it for year two. It's one year at the time, and our goal is to earn all five years. I mean, we we really, if 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 it was a one-year contract, it would not be profitable for us. But we believe that we'll do a good job, we believe you'll see a lot of value in it, we believe you're likely to want to continue it. But if you don't, no hard feelings, we'll we'll step back, we'll do it one year. And our our first goal, because you are already a a client, we have an office a block away, our first goal is to protect the Gallagher brand and 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 to protect the the work we're already doing for you. So if there's any doubt about whether you want us or not, we'll step back. But but I do think there's a lot of opportunity here, and uh I I I think that 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 I'd be really surprised if we stood back up here in in September and y'all weren't really pleased with the outcomes and the results.
Any questions for Gallagher consultants? I know that we do have a um, I I had a question, and you answered, you answered the one question of whether the five years was necessary or not, um, or optional, whether it was optional.
Totally your option.
So you're projecting ten to thirty percent per year of savings. So if if at our one point seven million dollar contract, it'd be a minimal of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollar benefit to the city, right?
Yeah, a fifty thousand dollar, I think, benefit, I think we're proposing a fee of one twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
So it would be a fifty thousand dollar benefit to the city, and we would expect that once you reset the basis, you'll be able to continue with that kind of lower basis over time. The markets will still fluctuate, and your exposures will fluctuate, meaning if you build a new building, you're going to pay more for insurance because you've got more to insure. But yeah, you you would realize those savings, and we think we would sustain it. I I hope we're on the thirty percent side of of the range, but I just, we like to err on the side of caution as much as we can because it's it's still an unknown.
If we ended up with the same vendor, F M I T, is it likely that we would um have to scale back for that level of savings, have to scale back any uh services that they render to us? I know that we use them considerably in certain fields.
It's a good question, no, you would not. Um, it would just be, it's it's just the transaction price of the insurance, the service platform's a service platform, and it's not tied to the price. And um further to that, Gallagher has a service platform that we've gone over with the city that you would also get access to too, and there's some things like like safety training, um, contract compliance issues, stuff like that that we'd be able to help with, and we'd be able to insert in within that that fee as well. So it's not just purely the competitive evaluation of the insurance program, it's an ongoing relationship that that we believe will add value and help the city be be safer, be be a better risk, and 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 ultimately will make it more attractive to underwriters over time.
Trying to see if I have any other questions for you, having gone through the um, again, you answered my question on the on the contract. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Right, so that concludes our presentation section, now we'll move on to old business. Uh, and we will begin with um our open public hearing on city council ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three oh two, which is amendment a code on police pension plan from last meeting. Uh, Mr. Martin, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three oh two. An ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida, amending the code of the city of Lake City, Florida, chapter seventy, article four, police officers' pension plan and trust fund, amending section seventy dash ninety-six point one to provide for payment of supplemental benefits to those receiving service incurred disability benefits and the continuation of supplemental benefits to joint annuities prospectively, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this on second and final reading, an appropriate motion would be to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three oh two, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Uh, we didn't have anybody signed up for public uh comment on this, so we won't have any. Uh, and so I'll move on to council comment and entertaining uh a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve city council ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two-three zero two.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments, questions? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Gernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. All right, now we are moving on to uh item number six, city council ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three oh four amendment, uh essentially amendment uh to code on LDR and planning fees. Uh, Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three oh four, an ordinance pertaining to land development regulation fees within the city of Lake City, repealing existing land use regulation fees established by resolution twenty nineteen dash zero nine nine, establishing updated fees for land development regulation processing and review, establishing provisions regarding payment of said fees, establishing exceptions thereto for financial hardship, repealing all resolutions and and ordinances in conflict, making findings a fact and support thereof, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this uh ordinance on second and final reading, an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two-three oh four, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Also, no public comment unless it's for this. Ms. Harris? It is not, thank you. Uh, so I will close public comment on this one as well and open it up to council. Do we have any comments or I'll entertain a motion to approve number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three oh four?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city council ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two-three zero four.
Second. We have a motion uh by Councilman Carter, I did hear Councilman Gernigan uh first as the second. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion questions? Hearing none, uh, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Gernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. We don't have any resolutions tonight, so now we're moving on to other items. Uh, so we're at item number seven, which is discussion and possible action, decision on venue selection for the city to host the Northeast Florida League Dinner meeting to be held on Thursday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Sykes, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You have in your packets um the venue locations that we researched to find a venue that would host the number of attendees that we anticipate to attend the event in December. So you have those in front of you on that Excel spreadsheet, and we're, staff is just looking for guidance on where you would like us to make the reservations at.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. We didn't have anybody um, we didn't, it was in our packet, we we didn't have anybody uh um signed up for public comment on this one, so we will go ahead and move straight to council comments and questions. Open up the floor.
Mr. Mayor, as I stated before, I think the Blanche downtown is an excellent location to host this, both in the heart of our city, right here by City Hall, it recently remodeled, we helped with that. Um, I think it's a nice place to invite folks to show what our downtown's looking like.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
I agree, but did we get a cost?
Vice Mayor, yes, it was.
I don't have them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The cost is thirty-five hundred.
Yeah. And so
No.
From what I understand, the, we have um, we have an amount for deposit budgeted this year, uh, and it would be worked, the rest of it, if it went over, that would be worked into the budget for next year, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Pass it to Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Gernigan?
Um, so the Blanche is uh forty-nine hundred dollars or forty-four hundred dollars, what what is it?
No. She's got my.
Uh, so that's thirty-five hundred there, and the Florida Gateway Fairground is a uh uh eleven hundred, uh, with a fifteen hundred dollar deposit or something like that. Uh, I I, and and again, you know, we 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 don't want to spend money, uh, we don't want to raise taxes, and uh uh I I just think that the Florida Gateway Fairground would be the ideal space uh to have an event like this, and it's a pretty, pretty nice venue. I just cannot see us spending thirty-five hundred dollars when we can save that two thousand uh to host an event such as this. Uh, um, I mean, I'm not trying to uh I I'm I'm just trying to save money. Wherever we could save money, I think we should, and I think that uh that Florida Gateway Fairground would be a a very, very nice venue to host an event. We we just had uh an event out there not long ago, and it was pretty nice, so um, it is what it is, you know, whatever y'all decide to do would be all right with me. But I'm not, I'm not going to vote on the Blanche Hotel, I would definitely vote on the Florida Gateway Fairground.
I have to say, I I, the Blanche Hotel, that is for me out of the question because of the cost alone. But did you um check on any hotels?
Mm-hmm. So we had the, the Holiday Inn was also responded from the looks of it, there was, so we checked on, or um um, Ms. Sykes's office checked on uh various, uh including the Blanche, Courtyard Marriott, Florida Gateway Fairgrounds, Holiday Inn, J and L Rustic Barn, La Quinta, Towne Place Suites, uh, there was only three that responded from the looks of it. It was the Blanche Hotel, Courtyard responded, they didn't have any event space at the time. Um.
They're not big enough.
Not big enough, uh, La Quinta, all the same thing, uh, Florida Gateway Fairgrounds responded. Uh, they are a total of twenty-four ninety-five, the Blanche was four thousand four hundred and forty-five, and then the Holiday Inn uh was a total of eleven hundred.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is outside out of the question? I've gone to several, quite a few of them outside, and they're nice.
I think, I think it would, it depends, yeah.
And they're nice, it's not always freezing in December.
No.
It's a roll of the dice, though. It could be really nice, or it could.
That month, and it's outside, so.
If if somebody would like to make a motion or or have any discussion.
I think we need to wait and see if the other places um get back with us.
Well, I I think that we've given it, we've given it a good forty-five days or so, yeah. I don't think that we wait anymore.
Well, I'm going to have to go with Mr. Gernigan and be at the Fairgrounds.
Mr. Mayor, I found that, I found that agreeable.
It wasn't, it wasn't a motion, it wasn't a motion. Mr. Carter?
I was just saying, I find the Fairgrounds agreeable too, obviously, been too many events there as well.
Yeah. For for my two cents, all all three of these venues would work. Uh, I think the Blanche is the most signature um and unique place in our community, however, I think that the fair, all of them will work, so.
Did you try to see if they would give us a discount? I mean, it was the city that funded a lot of this.
I didn't ask them specifically for a discount, I solicited um what the needs were and was, did apples to apples on all of them, I sent them all the same information, so, yeah.
No, but with the um Blanche, the city gave a lot of money to get that fixed, it just seemed like they might give us a discount, I mean, if they don't, we.
If it's the will of the council, I can reach out and see if they'd be willing to reduce that fee any. If it's the will of the council, I can reach out and see if they'd be willing to reduce that fee any.
Mr. Mayor, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we give the city clerk directions on the Florida Gateway Fairground.
Okay, so we have a motion in favor of Florida Gateway Fairgrounds. Do we have a second?
We weren't finished first.
I thought you were finished.
So he made, he made a motion. If we get a second, we'll go back to discussion before we vote. Procedurally. Does anybody want to second it for a discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Alright, discussion. Ms. Young?
And I do want to respond to Councilwoman Harris. The city gave, once you give something, you don't expect anything back. And I believe the cost is the cost, so I would love to have it there, but not, not for that, not for that cost.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Alright. Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
And we are voting on the Fairgrounds. What would be the secondary choice in case the Fairgrounds are already booked for that date? So could we please build that into the motion as well, what the secondary choice would be?
Holiday Inn.
Fairgrounds with the Holiday Inn is the second choice is what we're voting on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Young, are you okay with that? It's your second? Okay. Mr. Gernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
And Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. This next one, item number eight. Everybody okay? Good, on time, alright. Item number eight, discussion of possible action. In-house city attorney, city manager, Don Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal, take it away.
Yes, this is, you have some information in your packet that talked about the cost of an in-house attorney compared to what we paid in the past. And what I would like to do is bring that position in-house. I think we'll get a full two thousand eighty hours as opposed to roughly a little over a thousand hours that we're getting now. I prepared a contract in your package. I would like the mayor to look at that and maybe give the mayor permission to negotiate with somebody once that person is selected.
So the, the action tonight, before we open public comment, would be to
To approve the contract in your packet.
Alright, approve the contract that was in the packet.
For discussion.
For discussion, alright. So that is our proposition currently, unless anybody would like to speak up here on the council and amend that proposition?
So the action being requested is that we approve discussing the contract in the packet?
Well, they, well, let me restate that. Not necessarily the discussion itself, but to approve the contract format that I put in the contract.
So the, the next step for finding someone with that contract?
Would be finding somebody and then using that contract to hire them.
Does that make sense?
Not to me. Alright. I just got a question for you, if you don't mind. Excuse me. Where, where do you get the contract from? And how to, how did you come up with the numbers, you know, for the contract?
Well, in your packet, where you're looking at what the city's paid out in legal services in the last ten years.
Yes, sir.
The highest we paid out is over four hundred thousand dollars a year, a couple of years. The lowest we paid out is a hundred and seventy-five. And we base that on the, on what the attorney charges the city, which is roughly a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. So that gives us a little over a thousand hours with the attorney. What I'm trying to do is get the, the full two thousand eight hundred hours with the attorney. I think it's going to speed up the services that we're trying to provide. I think it's going to give the staff ready access to attorney on a daily basis.
That's, that's, you definitely answered my question. However, I just wanted to know where you got the data from, you know, like
The data is from our records, from finance.
Okay.
See, I looked at the last ten years.
Very good, Mr. Rosenthal. Very good.
Mr. Rosenthal, you also had, so there's two positions that are in our backup. One for the city attorney and then one for a assistant with the total in here annualized. I was looking through and annualized, it made sense to me on the, the budget that we're only, we're paying those amounts that you're saying for less than full-time.
We're actually, we're actually getting part-time service for what we're paying right now.
Sure.
So we could, once we bring the person on, on staff, we'll be getting two thousand eighty hours a year instead of roughly a thousand, a little over a thousand hours a year, as I got illustrated down there for you.
And essentially, what it, what it looked like to me is we would get not only full-time service, but we'd get full-time and a legal assistant for what we, the, an average of what we've been paying over the last decade.
Absolutely. The attorney is going to need a legal assistant.
And that's with everything included.
Absolutely.
Not just the, not just the salaries.
And it stabilized our cost over a few years.
So really, what we probably I don't know if this was your intention or not, Mr. Rosenthal, and you can correct me if it wasn't, but to approve the contract for solicitation, but also the two positions, not just the one, is that correct?
Absolutely, the two positions.
Alright.
And I tried to write those, the two positions in the, in the request.
Sure. Alright. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, does that require a, a motion? I read through the contract. It makes sense to me. We discussed, I mean, the manager and I have discussed it, so I'm assuming we probably all have discussed to some degree. Do we need a, a motion to approve the contract? Like, I, I agree with these numbers, and I would be okay with the city soliciting someone to hire in this position? Is that, is that, is that what we're looking?
For the hard proposition for the public to speak to, Mr. Martin?
I'm, I'm listening, and I, I don't want to put words in the manager's mouth, but I, I think that what I'm hearing is that the, the request is that the, the council authorize the mayor to proceed with negotiating with someone to fill the position within the parameters set forth in the contract. Is that a not, not to actually approve the, the contract document itself?
Sure.
But to move forward with negotiating with someone using the parameters in the contract as the basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright. Then that will be our proposition if we come to an agreement on that? Resolve to vote on that specifically, and then we'll
Well, you're, you're voting on using that particular contract?
I think
To, to look for, to hire the person.
Okay.
But no one's actually hired until we, you know, we come back, we write a name in there, we discuss it, and go forward from there.
Is that, is that what you were saying, Clay? Pardon my use of your first name?
That's okay. I've been called worse. I think we're saying the same things, looking at opposite sides of, of the coin. But as I understand it, again, you, you won't be approving the contract itself until you've got a, until all essential terms of the contract are present. One of which is the name of the person
Who'll be signing it.
Who the, who the contract is with. So you're, you're not approving the contract, but you're using, I think he's asking that you approve that as a, a basis for negotiating with somebody to, to put their name on that contract, essentially. That it has the essential terms in it. It's got a salary, it's got a retirement level, it, it's got benefits specified, th- those sorts of things. And so, but, but so those would be the parameters that you would present to someone, just as if you were advertising the job and saying, you know, here's the salary, here's the benefits, here's this, and, and so forth. And, and so you'd be presenting that, and that's what you'd be approving to be, to present to someone should the council so desire.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Would it help if I read a motion for you?
It would.
Okay. A motion to authorize the mayor to proceed with negotiations with someone with the parameter set forth in the contract document for the city attorney position.
Say, can you read it one more time?
One more time? I'm so sorry. Can you hear me okay? Okay. It's a motion to authorize the mayor to proceed with negotiations with someone with the parameters set forth in the contract document for the city attorney position.
So moved.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We have, we have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We have a second. Thank you. Now, any discussion on the dais before, and I'm going to open this up to public comment here in just a moment, so. Ms.
I believe it's important that we hear parameter. That is not specific what's in that contract. And is, and is that correct? The numbers are not specific. It's in the parameter. In area of the numbers there.
It would be my understanding that the numbers there would be the, the maximum. I'm not, not looking to spend more than that, but I find that acceptable to pursue.
Okay. So the parameters with what's in the contract as the ceiling.
Yes.
Perfect. Alright. Time to open up the public comment. Mr. Lilker?
Thank you, Ron. This is about the most ridiculous thing I've seen since I've been attending city council meetings since two thousand and six. I think what you need is legal opinion on if the charter even allows this. This apparently is section B in the city attorney part, which was snuck in at the last charter review board. And this relies on that the city will set up a city attorney's office. I'm not exactly sure what that means. So I don't even know what you just did. You approved something with parameters? The city, the city council has the right. The charter says you are the guys that negotiate with the city attorney. This is what the charter says. So this is like taking out the negotiations beforehand? I've seen nothing in anything presented by the city manager, nor a reminder's board, as an MBA, so he knows how to do numbers and do research from any other city of a like size of Lake City that has an onboard city attorney's office. None, not one. I don't see anything in there. And this has worked through all this time. Mr. Martin makes himself available. I don't agree with the way he does his titles. It's kind of bloviated. I've spoken to him about this. It's up to you guys whether you want plain and simple language. But you guys are in charge of the city attorney. He works for you. I remind this board that in two thousand and eight or ten, when city manager Wendell Johnson took on the job, he wanted to get rid of the city, city clerk. He wanted the city clerk working for the city council. He wanted the city clerk to work for him. City council never did that. Now you have the same thing going on here. You've got a city attorney. And you've got a city manager who apparently is not happy with the performance of the city attorney. So he's come up with a scheme. His, his numbers are not adequate right now to get rid of the city attorney as a private contractor. And to hire him as a member of the staff of the city. Sort of like Dee Johnson with the finance manager. But with a contract. That's not really what the charter calls for. I don't see that there. You guys are giving up control to the city manager, which is going to make the city attorney directly answerable to him. And that's what you're deciding tonight. So if that's what you guys want to give up that power, I don't know if you can do it. I don't even know if the charter says you can do it. Because the charter says you guys hire it, and, and over the course of time, and I just might need two more seconds to finish my sentence. Over the course of time, this has worked for Lake City and cities like Lake City. So this is a major step. I think this is premature. You're approving a contract, a blank contract. So I think you guys need to look into this a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Lilker. Mr. Bowden, you're up.
Like Mr. Lilker, I, I, I am concerned about the charter. It's my understanding that the clerk, the city manager, and the city attorney answer to the council. I guess I'm trying to understand if the city manager, if the city attorney becomes a in-house person, would that person still answer to the council as opposed to the manager, he worked with the manager, but he'd still be an employee of the council? If that, that's what the charter calls for. My other concern is simply this, is that presently, we have a contract with a firm. If Mr. Martin, for whatever reason, cannot make it from the firm he worked for, then they send someone else, like they did with Mr. Kenon, someone else will come. If you got an in-house attorney, and that's one person, if for some reason, God forbid, I'm not suggesting anything will happen to whatever, whoever the city attorney cannot make it, then we don't have a backup. But for a firm, you got a, a backup. They can send someone else on their staff who can handle it. So if you end up with an in-house attorney, and that's only, only one person, then if you have an emergency, and that person can't be there, then that creates a problem. So that, that's the benefit of having a firm as opposed to an in-house, in-house attorney. Now, how we get to that person is also very important to me. You know, whether it's going to advertise, solicit some
Sorry, Mr. Bowden. The clock doesn't start.
Solicit some proposals. That's, that's a concern to me, that it, it should be open process, transparent. You know, that the in attorney who interesting becoming the city of Lake City, the city attorney should be able to apply for this job. You know, advertise it, put it out there for everybody to apply for the job, you know. You know, I don't have any issue with Mr. Martin, but I, I want to be sure that we don't have a, a, a plan here where it's a, a setup to, to bring him in without giving other people an opportunity to, to bid on it. If he end up being the person, so be it. But I do advocate that other people have opportunity to bid. You know, otherwise, you know, it could be some person, color interesting, it could be some woman interesting. I mean, it could be anybody interesting in this job. And I think the opportunity should be open to everybody to compete for a job of this nature. So that's, that's my take on it, and I, I think that, that I kind of share Mr. Lilker's concern, whether or not the charter would even permit you to do this, but I'm not a lawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. From my understanding, the position will still be under the city council, very much like the city manager and the city clerk. What we're doing is looking to move city coun, the city attorney in-house because annualized, we're paying more than we would be paying for a full-time attorney and, and their assistant. I, and to, to make my feelings about the matter pretty clear, I would like for Mr. Martin to be that guy. So I think that this is a good step to start that. So we've had public discussion. I don't have anybody else signed up, so I'm going to close public comment now. We'll come back to the council. Do we have any questions? We do have a motion on the floor, which Ms. Sykes will read for us again, and then we'll have more discussion or questions. Ms. Sykes?
It's a motion to authorize the mayor to proceed with negotiations with someone with the parameter set forth in the contract document for the city attorney position.
Perfect.
I'll make the motion to the same.
So we're, we're, if we, do we have any discussion? We're going to vote on that. That's because one is already on the floor.
We have a motion and a second.
Any questions, comments? Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Gernigan? Mayor Walker?
Yes. And at that, folks, I know we've been in here for about an hour and ten minutes. I'm going to take, yes, sir.
Just, Mr. Mayor, before we do that, we're, while we're on this item, and, and since my name has been invoked, I, I would say that I, I do have an interest. And if asked, I would consider it. And in light of that, I want to advise the council that i- if that is the case, then I would have a conflict of interest in doing anything else regarding advising you on the contract itself and the negotiations. And would recommend that, to the extent that I'm involved in the, the search that you seek outside council to advise you on the negotiation of the contract on behalf of the council, because I can't do that. I would have a conflict of interest.
So do we need to
And Mayor, you, you should know, we're already looking into that, the clerk and I.
Do we need to go ahead and produce another action to, to resolve that for the board tonight?
If, if you would like to approve the additional attorney tonight,
Yeah.
we would need another action.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Young?
I asked that city manager, Rosenthal, clarify what he just said. You already looked into that.
Yes, well, we, well, we realized that if we, if this was approved, we would need to get another attorney, because he wouldn't be able to help us anymore with this.
Just for contract negotiations?
Just for contract negotiations. We need to get somebody to write the resolution. So we were looking at, the clerk and I were looking at getting additional attorneys to bid on that for us.
Okay.
Are we supposed to put it out, whereas if somebody else want to go for that position or not? What are the rules on that? Do it's supposed to be put in the newspaper and offered to someone else? I wouldn't want it to come back and buy.
We, we're going to post it.
It's a fair question.
That's a fair, we're going to post it.
Well, Ms. Sykes, do you?
Isn't there a statute that allows, procurement could probably answer that, that allows us to hire attorney? Or, Mr. Martin, maybe you could answer that without going out for bid on that?
In, in the city's personnel policies, it states that the three charter officers may be selected without
Okay.
Definitely advertising the position. If the council wants, you can advertise it, but it's up to the council.
Now, I would like for procurement to answer that question, because here again, it's conflict of interest. He shouldn't discuss any more of it. So let's hear it from procurement, if that's okay, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. Yes, Ms. Brenda?
Legal services are exempt from the procurement process for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right. Would anybody like to indicate an action to, to get a contract attorney to walk us through this process? That's so that Mr. Martin doesn't have a conflict of interest in that I invoked his name?
Mr. Mayor, with the, with the, is, is what you're looking for here, the council making a motion that you, that the, that the manager looks through the bidding process for an attorney to handle this specific thing for us?
We don't have to do the bidding process according to Ms. Carr. Ms. Carr, can you please step back up to the podium to answer that question?
So legal services are exempt from the procurement process, so we don't have to go out for it. But I think they're going to post this as under HR, is that correct?
But for the, in terms of the contract attorney to walk us through this contract negotiation, if it were to be with Mr. Martin, is what I'm?
Yeah, you would have to hire a different attorney.
Without the, without the procurement process?
Sure.
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Ah, no problem.
Right? Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, Mayor. I believe that the amount that it would probably cost for us to, to do that would probably fall within the realm of what the city manager is authorized to do anyway. So I don't know that we necessarily need a motion unless you guys would feel more comfortable with that. But I think that's well within the realm of what the city manager is able to do.
Yeah.
As long as it's within that, then we're, I'm fine with it.
We're good, Mayor.
Great. Okay. Well, that closes us out for item number eight, and I will call for a five-minute adjournment. Are you going to call this meeting back to order? I will now call this meeting of April 21st, 2025, back to order. And we are now on new business of ordinances. And we are on number nine, city council ordinance number 2025-2305. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you ordinance number 2025-2305, an ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida, amending chapter 86, article one, section 86 dash two of the city of Lake City Code of Ordinances concerning park hours, providing definitions, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to approve this ordinance on first reading, an appropriate motion would be to approve ordinance number 2025-2305, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I have, we have public comment on this, but Mr. Hudson, you asked to kind of break up the timing of this, is that correct? Okay. Well, then what we'll do is we will go, we'll do public comment during our, after our motion is made and seconded. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. That will be before the vote. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for the question.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve city council ordinance number 2025-2305.
We have a motion and a second. All right, now let's have discussion. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Or actually, we'll have, do you want to make?
Well, I, what I, I would like, Mr. Mayor, is if we could have the chief, it was his suggestion that we change these hours. I'd like it if he could come up and explain a couple of things, and we have a couple of questions of the chief.
Sounds good.
Sir?
Why do you think we should change the hours?
Currently, the hours for that park are eight to five. The city, the state spent a lot of money putting in this recreational facility. The council, when I go out to community meetings and talk to individuals, all I keep hearing is there's nothing for people to do in Lake City. The eight to five is an arbitrary number. My recommendation is we go a half hour before sunrise to a half hour before sunset. That way, during daylight hours, the fishing pier is open for everybody to enjoy. People get out of work at five o'clock, especially in the summer. They can get there and spend a couple of hours fishing before it gets dark. Kids can use it more during the day, because there's nothing, there's not a lot for them to do that's not high cost. So if they have a fishing pole, they can go there and do their fishing. In addition to that, I know that the vets like using that pier. So I feel it's, it's a valuable asset to the city and that being open during all the daylight hours is more beneficial.
Obviously, there's time changes, and obviously, the time changes throughout the year as far as when the sun's coming up. You were telling me a little bit the other day, but for everybody on certification, how do you plan to decide what is half an hour before and half an hour after?
I was, they go by the naval observatory times. And I was talking with the executive director of utilities. They'll be responsible for the clock on the gate. What we will do is we will set up four signs with the time, so it'll be the earliest and the latest every three months. The gates will be readjusted to work for the sunrise, sunset, and the time will be changed on the sign that shows what time the gates are closed. That way, nobody gets trapped inside and everybody's aware of when the boat ramp and the pedestrian gate for the fishing pier open and close.
So the intention, Chief, is to change the sign each time we change the time?
What I envision it is we'll have a sign, we'll have inserts that can be bolted on and bolted off, like we do with some other signage, and we will use that to change the times.
My question, yes, Vice Mayor Young?
So you won't have a numeric message on the, on the sign? You're going, you're going to literally say one half before?
No, no, no. We will pick the earliest and the latest time during that three-month period. That will be when the gate open and closes.
So right, right now, what would the time be?
I wasn't prepared to, whatever, half hour before to a half hour after. So it would say, let's say sunrise, I'm just throwing out a time, let's say it's 7:00 AM. The gates would open at 6:30, half hour before sunrise. If sunset is eight o'clock, it would close at 8:30, half hour for that three-month period.
I'm, I'm not getting to one half hour. What am I missing?
Would it make, would it make as much sense to have? I always say that machines with the most parts, most moving parts break most often. It seems like there's a lot of moving parts. If we're changing times, we used to have four times a year?
It'd be every three months, yes.
Three months. Would, would it make as much sense to have two defined time periods? Maybe one for the, the winter period, October to March, and then for April to September, to encompass those later hours from April to September to 8:00 PM or so? Because you know, sunset doesn't, I mean, the sun, sun's still out. What time is it? Seven thirty almost? It'll be out for probably another hour. But you really don't want folks in the parks after sunset, correct?
Correct. The ti, the, the, the time the parks are open, and this is, I believe it's the other ordinances, this is the time the parks are open and closed. The gates really don't affect the police department enforcing the curfew in the parks. That's just when those gates are going to be open and closed. If the gate malfunctions and it stays open, we're still going to be telling people they have to leave, let's say, the fishing pier if it's after hours, like we do now.
Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
So to be clear, I, I feel like the, the times already for the other city parks are half an hour before sunrise and half an hour before sunset. The reason that this is relevant here, correct?
Yes.
The reason this is relevant here is because none of the other parks have a gate that has a specific time that is going to go like this and this, right? So since it is going to be set at a specific time in order for the gate to work, it won't know when to open and close if not given a particular time. I feel like one visit every three months allows us to be a little bit more specific and granular. But I mean, at, at the end of the day, it's changing some numbers in a machine that's designed to have the numbers changed. So to me, if you do it the other way, there will just be times when it feels like people are out there way too late, and there'll be times when it feels like people are out there way too early. This allow, by switching it every, every quarter or so, allows us to follow the naval, the naval time scale that follows the tracking of the sun and the moon and so on and so forth. So I feel like if it were an overly complicated process, I would understand that. But in this case, it just lets you be a little more specific and particular, so that way it isn't, at some hours, it's, you know, nine o'clock, and sometimes it's seven o'clock, and sometimes it's anywhere in between. And also, the, the chief and, and Mr. Brown will be the ones handling the doing of this. I feel like if they don't feel like it's too difficult or tedious to do this, that makes, I feel comfortable with that.
Councilman Harris, you had something to say?
What are the times for the other parks? Whatever, whatever seat. If it, if the times for the other parks are seven o'clock to eight o'clock, just say seven o'clock to eight o'clock.
It's the, it's, unless I'm in error, it's, that's the same language on the other parks.
Yeah, and then when, I guess, when the time change or what have you, if it, if the, if it's going to be seven o'clock to five o'clock, just say seven o'clock to five o'clock. Don't, going every three months, that's, that's a little much. When, when police officers or you guys could be doing something else versus going out there to change a sign.
Oh, we're not changing. Public Works, utilities would be doing that.
So he's agreeing with me. They could be doing something else, because I got plenty for them to do versus going to just change a sign.
My simple, Mr. Brown?
I was just going to say, does Mr. Brown have anything to add? I don't want to speak for him.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the big thing about this park was this was driven from a different direction. All of our other parks are the same exact time, daylight to dark. It's very simple. This, this was driven by the citizens that live around the lake that wanted these specific times, and it was voted upon, and it does change from winter to summer. But as far as, as what we have seen, there were the reasons that we put these, these mechanisms in place to limit the time they could be there. We've, we've since put a fence all the way around it. There, so there has been tools to implement the, the influx of the homeless people that were there. As far as public works goes, I agree with the chief. I mean, it would be easier to just do like all the other parks, clearly. You can still have the gates, they can lock and close daylight to dark. So this is the only one that we have that's like this.
This is our only, this is the most complex park that we have, correct? Though, and that people, no, no other park, people are having to trailer a boat or, or anything at, by a certain time.
And, and what is very interesting about this is the city doesn't govern the body of water.
True.
They go through our park to get to the water, so we're dictating when they can and cannot use the body of water based off the time the gates are open. And that is, we've got a lot of pushback against that.
Yep, Mr. Carter?
Mr. Brown, whenever you, whenever we change the times, when we go to the actual gates and we change the times, roughly how long does that take to do?
It's done through IT. It's, for our part, it's relatively simple. They, they change the time on the back end, and that's when the gates open and close. So Mr. Dumas is who actually operates that forest, and, and he hasn't, he hasn't issued any kind of a concern to me. We just get a lot of pushback from the citizens that they can't utilize this park like they can any other park. If they want to go to any other park at 7:30 in the morning, they're have access to the whole park. We go there very first thing in the morning and unlock the restrooms for that reason. This park is, is literally limited to when it is open and This park is, is literally limited to when it is open and closed, based on the gates, to, to what chief's point was, these gates stay locked.
I'd, I'd like to see this, uh, see the hours expanded for sure. But my, I just have a simple mind. So whenever I start thinking about the, the timing and use of a park, uh, and, and trailering a boat down there, and then having to remember when dusk is that day, so that I get my, my boat off the lake, uh, load up my child, all that stuff before it gets closed in, and I gotta come back and pick it up the next morning, it would be easier for me to not have that moving target, is, is kind of my thought process on that.
And that, that is, that is one of the things that, that we're talking about here. You're gonna know if it's dark outside thirty minutes before, you're gonna know if it's getting dark, you're, you're supposed to be off the body of water, so that, that would fluctuate with it as well.
My only thought is being able to set an alarm.
Right.
All right. If it closes at eight o'clock, I'm setting it at seven fifteen, and we're, we're moving to the boat ramp. Mr. Carter, you have something to say?
Yes, uh, I think that this is, this is that, because it's gonna be set at a specific time, and there'll be a sign next to the gate that says the time. So you'll pull in and say, oh, it closes at eight thirty today. And then at eight o'clock, that's when your alarm will go off and you will say, I should leave.
But it'll change three ti, four times a year.
Right.
What I'm saying is have two sets of permanent time that you keep there all year round.
Yes.
That way, you can see in the, if you, if it's October first, it's this date or this time. If it's April first, it's this other time. Does that make sense?
See, my, my issue with the ga, the park being open, sunrise to sunset, is a separate issue from when the gates open and close.
Okay.
So, the, you know, law enforcement, we're gonna, when it gets dark, okay, you've got, you know, you gotta get out of the park. Or, you know, obviously during the day, if they're doing something illegal, it doesn't make a difference what time of day it is, we'll, we'll address it. It's when do we gonna, when do we want the gates to close to stop the access to the ramp or the fishing pier? And really, either, either system, I'm agreeable to. I just think we should have the pier open for people to fish from sunrise to sunset.
Sure. Okay. Vice Mayor Young? Nope, Miss Young, I was, sorry.
Oh, I agree with the sunrise to sunset, but only change it two times, when the time change.
That, that's fine, too.
That's what I say, too.
All right, well, we have a, we have a motion and a second. We're gonna have public comment on this. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Brown, uh, Chief Butler? Yes.
I do.
Mr. Jernigan.
I, I think I had a meeting with, well, my, my fact, I know I had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Hudson, who's a, uh, a citizen that, uh, that, he, 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 he basically, in my opinion, uh, uh, he's policing that lake, uh, to getting people out of there and, and not locked, locked in. Uh, I'm just wondering that, uh, how many other citizens in that particular area came to the, uh, Police Department or talked to Public Works? And, uh, and talked to you guys about the time, to, to make sure that, uh, that time fits, uh, those people around that lake? Because obviously, there's some concern, and there has been some activity throughout the years, uh, at that, uh, particular lake, uh, particular park. So I was wondering that anybody talked to any of the, uh, citizens there? I, I got a, um, I think I got an email from Mr. George Hudson here. Uh, he's explaining why, uh, he wants it, things done a, a certain way. And, and of course, I told him, uh, it's, uh, I don't think that's my district, I think that's Mr. Carter's district. And, uh, he said he talked to Mr. Carter. He just wanted to make everybody aware of the problems that has arise, arose there, uh, in the past. And, uh, and while we were there, the gate was getting ready to close, and, uh, about, I, I guess about five o'clock, he went over there and told, it was like three or four people inside the lake fishing. He said, hey, I'm, I'm just letting y'all know, the gate's gonna close, cause I watched him do exactly just that, and he's taken, uh, uh, I, I, I mean, I wouldn't do that, but tha, that's what he wants to do. So, uh, he's just trying to make sure everybody's complying. So, I, I'm just wondering, have you talked to, uh, other constituents, uh, around that lake and see what's best for the citizens, uh, around that lake? And, and again, I'm, when, when the chief, uh, makes his, uh, recommendations and things like that, I'm, I'm all for it. Uh, se, security and the safety of our, our, our citizens here is very, very important. So, I just wondered, have y'all talked to anybody around that lake?
I haven't talked to any of the residents around the lake. I have been discussions with residents of the city who are disappointed in the hours of the lake, and that, how come we can't keep it till sunset? And most of the crimes or the incidents that you're referring to that happened years ago, happened at night anyway, so the park would be closed. And again, if it's twelve o'clock in the afternoon, and there's people doing drugs in the park, and I don't care if it's open or closed, we're taking enforcement action. So, and at night, plus fish, uh, the state does have a license plate reader system that is tied into our system. So when vehicles do go in and out, if something happens, we'll be able to get the plates on the vehicles and do an investigation.
And just for the record, I've talked to two. Mr. Um, um,
George Hudson.
Hudson and Mr. Sampson had, had reached out to me and questioned some timings. Those are the only two that I've spoke to.
Thank you, guys.
I, I think, to be, to be clear, the ordinance itself is setting the times at a half hour before and a half hour after. Obviously, I, my expression was that I am, uh, in favor of the chief's original suggestion. However, whether it's two times a year or four times a year, the idea really is getting the hours widened, so people can fish before work, after work, in the morning, in the evening, and stuff like that. So, uh, for what that's worth, the, 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 the ordinance doesn't need to change. If we approve this, then we can determine how we change the times, whether it's, because the ordinance itself doesn't say, go change it four times a day or go change it twice. It's just changing, uh, the hours.
It's by the.
Half hour and half hour.
Yeah, by the, uh, naval standard, by the right, chief, by the. Yeah.
Yes, I mean, to say that the, whether we go change it four times, three times, two times, one time, that's not in the ordinance. Just changing the hours of the time of the park from currently eight to five to half an hour before sunrise and half an hour before, after sunset, is what we are actually voting on.
Eight to five is, is very restrictive, but we did just launch this park.
Sure.
Um, so it's in its fledgling stage. So we do have our, our motion, second. We've had discussion here. Anybody else before I open it to public comment? Mr. Hudson, you're signed up for this?
Thank you. I'd like to thank councilmen and, and the chief and all for doing their best to clarify the proposed addendum to the current ordinance pertaining to Campbell Park at Lake Montgomery. The way that the ordinance reads right now, there are no stated times in that ordinance right now. It just states sunlight and sunrise and sunset. Uh, what I did not hear are exact park, park hours and the dates and months that are planned. In the planning for the building of the new fishing pier, former council had the courage to hit a home run when they voted in the gating and fit seat in the park along with posted hours to provide the safety and security of the visitors and the private citizens that live on the lake, plus the protection of the lake for all future, so that this lake will not end up being ruined like Gwynne Lake was. I believe that this has also saved the park from ruin, so that visitors can enjoy the peace and quiet, plus the beauty of the lake. Did they get the hours wrong for some months that have longer daylight? You bet they did. But the public needs to know the exact hours and dates beforehand, not one day before or the day that it changes, that this park is open, instead of confusion what's, this is bringing, uh, from this addendum. There has been and continues to be confusion right now at the park, as there are still two old park signs that state closed at sundown, even with the new signs stating the current dat, dates and times. I believe that we need to stick to the KISS mantra, keep it simple, stupid. I'm a huge supporter of adding more time for the park to be open, and behind the scenes, I have been talking to the powers that be to do so, but it has to go before you, the council. I find it kinda strange that the first proposal I presented for added times was for four time changes per year, based upon sunup and sunset, and what was told that it was too much and confusing, and now we're presented with four yet unknown time changes that are, that are even more so. My current suggestion was, current suggestion was to add three months of the longer hours to the existing ordinance that would work around the daylight and savings time changes. Sunup and sundown change a minute each day. And I need to remind everyone that we already talked about the gates are on timers, the only gates in town on timers, and that would be a challenge. We can't forget that there are no lights on the fishing pier or in the park, uh, that is gated. Most boaters and visitors to the park have gotten used to the current hours, and those that do not realize that the gates automatically lock at the current time are learning through cautioning by Good Samaritan. I need to remind everyone that this is a sad realization that all public parks are changing for the safety and security. Little River Springs, Rum Island, Alligator Park are all gated with hours of operation. You can only float down Nitschutney River from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and you can't float past, uh, Twenty Seven Bridges. Both parks and three rivers are gated and open only to HOA members.
Bring it in for a landing, Mr. Hudson.
I'll leave it to council to, uh, to vote. If you pass tonight, the park still will not open longer until June. If you do not pass tonight, they will, they will still, that will not open until June. So we would have time, if you vote no, to get these hours set in stone and move forward for, for the park.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion, a second. We've had discussion on ch, closing public comment. You were the only one that, Mr. Hudson was the only one that signed up for that. Do we have any further discussion questions from the council?
Uh, well, just one last thing I forgot to mention earlier. Uh, last Monday, I had the opportunity to speak, uh, for Scout Troop Eighty-Five. Um, they've been in discussions in the past to help, uh, with like, as a project with the city to ke, help keep that lake clean. Troopmaster and the troops there shared with me that one of the reasons they haven't been able to so far is because they meet at seven every week, and the park is closed at five. Uh, so they said that this, this would, uh, but increasing the hours later to a sundown, um, uh, closing time would allow them to be able to go out there and do projects like cleaning up the lake. So, they, they, they just wanted me to express their strong support as well.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Jernigan?
Yes, so, so I just wanna make, make it clear, uh, if we pass this tonight, uh, when would the hours of Operation be? When would it take place?
Ju, June.
We, we have to wait to June to do that. But, and, and, and we got, we gotta wait till June. However, the, the, the park is still closing at five, uh, right now. We have to wait until June before we can do it again, before we can change the hours. Is that what you're telling, telling me?
I don't, I don't understand that, uh, because sundown is not at five.
Right. Would it be effective immediately, chief? Mr. Martin? Can somebody answer that? This is only first reading, so we would have a second reading anyway, so it'd be at least two more weeks.
Yeah, well, 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 two weeks. When you said June, this is April, May and then June. So, so I'm saying, uh, somebody said something about June.
Mr. Hudson said June.
Yes, so, so, uh, I think that we should, if we're gonna do it, let's go ahead and, uh, do the first reading, second reading, and then, uh, get this thing, uh, get these hours extended before June. That was my, that was my point.
Okay.
Agree.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
No. All right, we'll move on to item number ten. City Council Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Twenty Three Oh Six, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida pertaining to the Police Officers Pension Plan Board of Trustees, amending Chapter Seventy, Article Four of the City of Lake City, Florida Code of Ordinances entitled Police Officers Pension Plan and Trust Fund, amending Section Seventy Dash Ninety-Three to change the terms of trustees of the Pension Plan Board of Trustees, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this on first reading and advance it to second and final reading, an appropriate ordinance would, I mean, appropriate motion would be to, uh, pass ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Twenty Three Oh Six, uh, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment for this, so I'm going to close public comment on this item, move it to council comment questions, concerns. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Ms. Harris.
Here, speaking to your microphone, please.
I'd like to move to approve ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Twenty Three Oh Five.
Twenty Three Oh Six. This is the one we're on. So we have a motion and a second for City Council Ordinance Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Six. Any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Now we're on, uh, number eleven. So, City Council Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Eight. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you on, uh, first reading, ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Eight, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the text of the City of Lake City Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application LDR Twenty Five Dash Oh One by the City Council, providing for amending Section Four Dot Twelve Dot Two, entitled permitted house, permitted principal uses and structures to permit churches and other houses of worship as a permitted principal use and structure within the CG or Commercial General Zoning District, providing for amending Section Four Dot Twelve Dot Five, entitled special exceptions by deleting churches and other houses of worship as a use permitted by special exception within the CG Commercial General Zoning District, providing for amending Section Four Dot Thirteen Point Five, entitled special exceptions by deleting churches and other houses of worship as a use permitted by special exception within the CI or Commercial Intensive Zoning District, providing for amending Section Four Dot Fourteen Dot Five, entitled special exceptions by deleting churches and other houses of worship as a use permitted by special exception within the C CBD or Commercial Central Business Zoning District, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to advance this to second reading, an appropriate motion would be to, uh, adopt ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Eight, as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Uh, we don't have any public comment on this. Do we, do you have explanation for this?
Would bring the city into compliance with a federal law that was passed actually back in, uh, two thousand. Uh, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, commonly referred to as RUPA, basically states in a nutshell that if you're in a zoning district that allows a similar type of use or assembly to a, a church or a religious institution, then you have to allow by right that church or religi, any church or religious institution in that zoning district without any further additional regulation that you're not placing on those other uses. And so right now, for instance, the categories that we've, we've presented before you to make those changes to require a special exception, because, uh, things, and, and in the act, they specifically call out movie theaters or theaters in general, because those other categories allow for those by right, this brings us into compliance by saying that a church or religious institution could also be in the same zoning districts by right without any additional regulation or regulatory, um, procedure to have to go through.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Thomas? All right. Questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Ordinance Twenty Twenty Five Dash Two Three Oh Eight.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on, we're gonna open our quasi judicial hearing with item number twelve. Mr. Martin, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight, council, you actually have three matters that must be considered and voted on by the council quasi judicial.
Will you, will you speak into your microphone, please? Sorry.
In a quasi judicial manner. Those items are on first reading ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Seven, uh, based on application ANX Twenty Five Dash Oh Three, which is an ordinance considering an application for voluntary annexation submitted by Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank. Uh, your second item, uh, in the quasi judicial hearings is, uh, on first reading ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Nine, an ordinance amending the future land use plan map pursuant to an application CPA Twenty Five Oh One, submitted by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering and Consulting as agent for Oda Moses and Company, LLP, the property owner. And the third item in your quasi judicial hearings tonight is also on first reading, and it's ordinance number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Twenty Three Ten, an ordinance amending the official zoning atlas pursuant to the rezoning application Z Twenty Five Oh One, also submitted by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering and Consulting as agent for Oda Moses and Company, LLP, the property owner. The purpose of the procedure that I'm gonna run through here really quickly is to ensure that the applicants each receive, uh, or I'm sorry, has an opportunity to provide a complete presentation of their request to the council prior to any testimony being provided by staff, so the applicant receives a fair and full hearing on their application, and any decision made by the council is based on the evidence presented. All public testimony will be taken under oath, and everyone testifying will be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence. The giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts, and closing arguments will be limited to evidence of record. To accomplish this, uh, first, we're going to hear- To accomplish this, first, we're going to hear from the city, which will provide its summary and then its case. Followed by that, the applicant will then present its case with no time limit. And then any party interveners, if we have any, shall present their case. Participants in opposition would then have an opportunity to speak, and, or opposition and support would have the opportunity to speak. Each participant would be limited to three minutes. Then we would hear from representatives of groups of six or more. And if it's someone speaking on a group, on behalf of a group of six or more, it would be a five-minute time limit. The applicant may then cross-examine any witnesses and respond to any testimony presented. Afterward, a party intervener may then cross-examine any witness and respond to any testimony presented. Following party interveners, city staff may do the same. After these responses, if the mayor deemed it necessary and appropriate to ensure fairness and due process, the mayor may choose to allow participants to respond to any testimony provided by others during the hearing. City council members at that point, through the mayor, may ask questions of the staff, applicant, and participants. After the council asks its questions, it may have, the applicant followed by staff would make any final arguments. I will then advise council as to applicable law and factual findings that must be made. Once advised on the law and necessary findings, the council would then have an opportunity to conduct an open deliberation regarding the evidence presented. And then, following a motion, vote to either approve or deny the application, or if appropriate to the particular item, approve with conditions. All persons have the right through the mayor to ask questions of staff or other speakers to seek clarification of comments made by staff or other speakers and respond to comments or presentations of staff or speakers. All people presenting written materials to the city council for consideration must ensure a copy of those materials is provided to the clerk to be included in the council's record of proceedings and minutes. While the council welcomes comments from all persons with an interest in this proceeding, Florida law requires the council's decision and quasi judicial actions be supported by competent substantial evidence presented to the council during the hearing on the application. Competent substantial evidence is evidence a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. There must be a factual basis in the record to support opinion testimony from both expert and non-expert witnesses. People presenting testimony may support their testimony by relying on factual information provided by city staff, the applicant, or other factual information included in the city staff report. At this time, I need to inquire of each member of the council individually if they've received any ex parte communications involving any of these matters, and if so, to please disclose them. Ex parte communications are communications that you've had outside of the hearing today concerning these matters. I'll start at the end of the dais with Councilwoman Young. Have you had any ex parte communications on any of these three matters? Councilman Carter?
No.
Councilman Jernigan?
No.
Councilwoman Harris?
No.
And Mayor Walker?
No.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to swear everyone in together for all three hearings. So if each person that's going to speak in either of these three matters, the annexation or the two land use matters, if you could raise your right hand to take an oath. Do each of you swear that the testimony provided tonight in any of these quasi judicial hearings before the council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Now, council members, you have before you proposed ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-O-Seven on first reading, which states, "An ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, pursuant to petition number ANX Twenty-Five-O-Three submitted by Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank relating to voluntary annexation, annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida and to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, making certain findings effect and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date." Mr. Thomas, at this time, can you provide your introduction and information concerning ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-O-Seven?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. It stated, "It's a petition for annexation, voluntary annexation, parcel Twenty-four ninety-eight dash zero-zero-three. It is surrounded on three sides by the municipal boundary, and therefore it is compact and contiguous. It petition meets all the applicable statutory requirements for annexation, and ultimately, the annexation and the future land use change and rezoning will be in advance of a site plan for a new convenient store and gas station on that location, the former Drummond Bank." This gives you your location, so you can see to the northeast and south, surrounded by the City of Lake City. To the due west is unincorporated Columbia County. And therefore, staff's recommended action would be to approve ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Twenty-Three-O-Seven on first reading. And the applicants are here, prepared to give you a presentation if you have questions.
And Mr. Thomas, are you moving that presentation into the record?
And I'm moving the presentation into the record, please.
Thank you. And now the applicants.
Good evening. Simone Savino with Sterns Weaver Miller on behalf of the applicant. We have a presentation, so I'm just going to pause and make sure it makes its way to the screen. Do I just go to the next one? Sorry.
There you go.
Okay, here we are. Thank you for having us tonight. I wanted to introduce myself as well as the rest of the applicant team. We're all present this evening, and so we just wanted to use this as an opportunity to introduce ourselves. So as I stated, I'm Simone Savino. Myself, as well as Cynthia Spidel, are here on behalf of Sterns Weaver Miller. We're heading up the legal and land planning. The applicant is Race Track. And we have Samantha Jones as well as Amira Muhammad here on their behalf this evening. We have Beth Leeptrat, our civil engineer for CW Prime Engineering with us. And we also have Chris Walsh with Walsh Traffic Engineering present. We don't want to belabor any points, but we wanted to give this opportunity to Race Track to just kind of give you a brief overview of their interest in the property. So I'm going to turn it over to Amira for just a few minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Amira, and I'm just going to tell you all a little bit about Race Track. So here we have an EFC motto. It's a six thousand square foot building. This would be the building that we would be proposing. And there is actually only one building like this in Winter Haven, so the one that would be coming to Lake City would be, you know, a new one as well. Here are just some images of what the inside of our newer buildings look like. So we have our outside seating, our food, our coffee bar, and everyone's favorite, the Swirl World. Again, so Race Track is designed with our drivers and our travelers in mind. So we do offer clean restrooms, free Wi-Fi, and again, spacious seating outside as well. And then we do have multiple fueling dispensers with competitive pricing, so it does help reduce the wait time as well. And then, again, just hot and cold fold options, salads, pizza, again, Swirl World, and snacks of that nature. And now I'm going to give it back to Simone.
All right, so staff already did a great job presenting, so we're going to remain as brief as possible. As mentioned, this is an annexation for two point oh one acres in the city, and the property is located at three eight eight two West US Highway Ninety. This application is the first of three. Behind it will be the comprehensive plan application for a small-scale amendment, and then the PD rezoning application. And this is all for the redevelopment of the former bank site. This is just an aerial where it's hopefully able to introduce that currently the city remains on three sides of the property, the northeast and the south. This is what it looks like today. This next slide has an overview of some of the statutory criteria, some of the specific statutes that introduce annexations in the state. And, oh, oh, sorry, I went too far. I apologize. So we are, and we've been found by staff to be, we satisfy all these applicable criteria that are listed in the statutes. We're contiguous, reasonably compact, and located in an area that's designated for commercial. This slide outlines the criteria within the comp plan that guide annexation, and we're consistent with these criteria as well. This slide just wanted to introduce that within the current county future land use, we are highway interchange, and the proposed is going to be commercial with the city. The zoning currently is county highway interchange, and then the proposed zoning for the city will also be commercial highway interchange. So with those in mind, though the county zoning and the flu already allow for the proposed use, annexing this property into the city will allow the site to be developed cohesively within the city limits. And this will be, like we said, step one in the process. We'll be back before you for the additional applications. We have met all the applicable statutory criteria. And this, just wanted to emphasize, this is going to be targeted for passenger vehicles. This is not going to be a truck or travel center. We ask for your approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any party interveners tonight? I didn't see anybody in the audience that would have registered for that. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to offer public comment on this? Do we have any cards, Mr. Mayor?
Do not have any cards on this.
Okay, all right. No one representing any one of six or more? Let's see, does the city wish to respond to anything proud about the applicant or vice versa? And I think I neglected to ask, do you move your presentation into the record?
I do. I apologize, and we're here for any questions as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate for questions from council. Mr. Mayor?
Does the council have any questions? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes, I got two questions. You said it will not be a truck stop. Am I correct? We, I'm sorry.
That is correct.
Will not be a truck stop. I know we ran into a problem one time before with one of the stations out there wanting to turn it into a truck stop later. But this will not be a truck stop. Am I correct?
You're correct.
I had a question for Race Track. Just want to know if they accept EBT.
Yes, we do, accept EBT.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Council Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two-Three-Zero-Seven.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number thirteen, City Council Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-O-Nine. Mr. Martin, please read this by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-O-Nine, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the future land use plan map of the City of Lake City, compressing the plan as amended relating to an amendment of fifty or less acres of land pursuant to an application CPA Twenty-Five-O-One by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering and Consulting as agent for Oda Moses and Company, LLP, the property owner of said acreage under the amendment procedures established in sections one sixty-three dot three-one-six-one through one sixty-three dot three-two-four-eight. Florida statutes as amended, providing for changing future land use classification from county highway interchange to city commercial of certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Lake City, Florida, making findings effect and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Thomas, can you please provide an introduction and your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. This petition is basically to change the future land use from a county designation to a city designation. We actually looked to see when it was annexed into the city and couldn't actually find the record of it, but it was a few years ago, and the land use and zoning never got changed when it was annexed in. And so this is going to take care of that issue. And so petition is to change from highway interchange county to commercial city. And basically, the city's land use category for highway interchange does not allow for the existing use. It's already an office building. What we're proposing will allow for that. And then, along with the subsequent rezoning, once it's complete, they'll move forward with a site plan application for an expansion of the existing facility. So here's the location. It's on US Highway Ninety. And therefore, staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Twenty-Three-O-Nine on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Can you move your presentation?
I move the presentation into the record, please.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, I don't have any additional testimony, but I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else here to speak on this particular matter tonight? At this time, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate for questions from council.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Would anybody like to move to adopt ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-O-Nine?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt City Council Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-O-Nine.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. Any further discussion or questions? All right, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number fourteen. Mr. Martin, please read that by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-Ten, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Lake City Land Development Regulations as amended relating to the rezoning of less than ten contiguous acres of land pursuant to an application Z Twenty-Five-O-One by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering and Consulting as agent for Oda Moses and Company, LLP, the property owner of said acreage, providing for rezoning from county commercial highway interchange to city commercial intensive of certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Mr. Thomas, if you could please provide the city's presentation.
Thank you. This is the companion rezoning petition for the property that was just discussed. As stated, we're going from the highway interchange county in this instance to commercial intensive in the city. This will allow them to not only continue with their existing use and not be a legal non-conforming use, but will be a conforming use, and also allow them to then move on to the next step, which would be a site plan application for an expansion of the existing facility. Again, there's the location, and staff's recommended action would be to approve ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Three-Ten on first reading.
Thank you.
And would like to read the presentation into the record, please.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add? All right, thank you. Anybody else here to speak on this particular topic tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions from council, an appropriate motion would be to pass the ordinance as read by title only.
Any questions, or would anybody like to make the motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two-Three-Ten.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Now we're on to number fifteen, which is the City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Zero-Three-Seven, having to do with the FAA DBE program. Mr. Martin, please read that by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you resolution number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Zero-Three-Seven, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida, concerning the Federal Aviation Administration Disadvantaged Business Enterprise, or DBE, program, ratifying the actions of the then-city manager taken on behalf of the city, committing the city to the terms of that certain September twenty-twenty DBE program policy statement executed by the then-city manager on October fourteenth, twenty-twenty, ratifying actions of city personnel taken in furtherance and in compliance with said program policy, approving that certain updated DBE program policy statement dated November twenty-twenty-four, committing the city to the terms of said disadvantaged business enterprise program policy statement, making certain findings effect and support of the city approving said November twenty-twenty-four DBE program policy statement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said November twenty-twenty-four DBE program policy statement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said policy statement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt said resolution as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment for this one, so I'm going to open and close at the same time and move on to council comments or questions on this item. Nope. If nobody has any, I will entertain a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Zero-Three-Seven.
A second.
No, I need you to make the motion.
Sorry, I make the motion. Resolution number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Zero-Three-Seven.
Thank you for the motion from Ms. Harris, the second from Councilman Carter. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number sixteen, City Council Resolution Number 2025-041. This is a resolution to update the reserve after, or reserve officer description. So, Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-041, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving that certain updated job position description for reserve police officer, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said position and description, directing the city manager to update the city's position descriptions manual with said revised position and description, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-041 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We have no submitted public comment cards for this one, so we'll move straight to council comments or questions. Do we have any or would anybody like to entertain the motion for 2025-041?
I'd like to entertain the Resolution Number 2025-041.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young? Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number seventeen, City Council Resolution Number 2025-044. It's the MOU with Immigration Services, so, or Enforcement rather. Mr. Martin, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-044, resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving that certain agreement in the form of memorandum of understanding between the city and United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, a component of the Department of Homeland Security, to implement the task force model contemplated by Section 287-G of the Immigration and Nationality Act by which the Lake City Police Department personnel may perform certain functions of an immigration officer, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-044 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment cards for this one either, so we'll move straight into council comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve City Council Resolution 2025-044.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? All right, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number eighteen, City Council Resolution Number 2025-050. This is our special magistrate appointment. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-050, resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida appointing Stephanie Marchman, Esquire of Gray Robinson, PA, as special magistrate to provide due process hearings for the city, establishing appointment terms, conditions, and scope of work, establishing rates, providing for severability, repealing all resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-050 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment cards for this one, so we will move straight into comments by the council.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Resolution 2025-050.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number nineteen, City Council Resolution Number 2025-055. This is a grant for repair at the airport. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-055, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving that certain agreement between the city and the Florida Department of Transportation for the administration of state grant funds to the Lake City Gateway Airport and pipe and asphalt repairs along Taxi Way A, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt Resolution Number 2025-055, an appropriate motion would be to adopt said resolution as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment cards for this one, so we'll move straight into council comments or motions?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-055.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number twenty, City Council Resolution Number 2025-056. This is CBDG Wilson Park Grant Extension. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-056, resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida amending that certain agreement related to the community development block grant between the city and Florida Department of Commerce, making certain findings of fact in support of the city amending said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-056 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any comment cards for this one from the public either, so we'll move straight into council comments, questions, or adoptions?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Resolution 2025-56, Vision 056.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? All right, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Item number twenty-one, City Council Resolution Number 2025-057. It's an ammunition surplus slash exchange for our police department. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you Resolution Number 2025-057, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving the exchange of three thousand rounds of frangible training ammunition in the possession of the Lake City Police Department for three thousand rounds of full metal jacket training ammunition in the possession of the State Attorney's Office of the Third Judicial Circuit, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said ammunition exchange, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute such documents as are necessary to transfer ownership of said frangible training ammunition to State Attorney's Office, directing the mayor to execute such documents as are necessary to accept the transfer of ownership of full metal jacket ammunition to the City of Lake City for use by the Lake City Police Department, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-057 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment for this one, so we will move straight to council comment, questions?
Mr. Mayor, move to...
Could Chief come and fill us in a little bit about the full metal jacket ammunition?
Thank you, Chief.
Currently, we have, it's called frangible ammo, that's non-lead ammo in our inventory. We purchased that when Florida Gateway College was upgrading their new range because they only accept frangible ammo. Well, that range is so popular that it's very difficult for us to get time in there to qualify as we're required to. We have another location where we go to qualify and we use our full metal jacket ammunition there. My armors have also told me that the frangible ammo, certain weapons, it doesn't handle the same way as our duty ammo. The State's Attorney's Office does use Florida Gateway College's range. So right now, that ammo is sitting in our inventory and I really can't use it. So this works out better for both because there's a back order on frangible ammo and the State's Attorney's Office does need to qualify their investigators. So it's a win-win for both.
Excellent, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Chief before he walks away? No, okay.
I'd like to move that...
2025-057, yeah, you can make a motion.
That Resolution Number 2025-057 be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Do we have any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, item number twenty-two. City Council Resolution Number 2025-059. This is the Gallagher contract with the the presentation that we had earlier. So, Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-059, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving that certain agreement between the city and Gallagher, Inc., a Florida corporation for consulting services to conduct a needs assessment related to property and casualty insurance premiums, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-059 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment for this one, so we'll move straight into council comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would only ask that if the, if the city manager has anything to add to this now that we've been told earlier in the presentation that we're not locked in to five years?
Yes, my, my concern was that we were going to be locked in to five years. I think they clearly explained that that wasn't the case, so I'm comfortable with one year at $125,000.
Year by year, a year by year contract. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Sorry, Mr. Carter?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Resolution 2025-59.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, one other discussion. How did they come to the conclusion from that three to five years? I, I mean, I've never heard that and I've been, you know, working in a professional job setting for a long time and I've never heard that three to five, it's always been a year to year. How did they come to that conclusion?
Well, I, I can only assume, Councilman, that they were projecting out for themselves to get the best possible deal for themselves too. I wouldn't want to commit us to $600,000 in doing that. We, I would, I would suggest that we look at the first year and see if we see a real benefit and then decide going forward.
And he said that it wasn't ideal for them to only be employed for a year, which is why they, they would be working toward it, but they have the five-year contract with the one-year opt-out is what I understand, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Does that make sense? Any other questions for, on this one? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Sykes, we're hearing no other discussion or questions, please call the roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. Thank you. Item number twenty-three, City Council Resolution Number 2025-060. This is bidding for a $1.5 million new taxi. Mr. Martin, will you please read Taxi Way at the Airport? Mr. Martin, please read this by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-060, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida adopting the evaluation and tabulation of responses to that certain invitation to bid Number 009-2025 for construction of LCQ North Development Hangar and taxi lanes, accepting the bid from Gray Construction Services, Inc., a Florida corporation, as the lowest responsive bid, approving the agreement with said vendor, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict, providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 25-060 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment on this one, so we'll move straight to the council comments or questions for adoptions.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Resolution 2025-060?
Motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number twenty-four, City Council Resolution Number 2025-061. Mr. Martin, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you resolution Number 2025-061, resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida concerning the Summer Youth Employment Program of the City of Lake City Police Department, recognizing the City of Lake City as the sole funding and administrative participant of the 2025 program, authorizing the creation of twenty part-time temporary positions to be administered by the City of Lake City Police Department and the city's personnel classification system, authorizing the transfer of funds from the Mariah Regine Smith Fund, account number 001.16.574-080.82, to said summer youth program, account number 001.11.521-030.49, to be administered by the City of Lake City Police Department, providing for the implementation and administration of the Summer Youth Employment Program by the City of Lake City Police Department from April 21st, 2025 through August 31st, 2025, providing for temporary part-time training and employment opportunities for eligible city residents within the city, making findings of fact in support thereof, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2025-061 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We do have public comment on this one, so I'll go ahead and open up public comment. And Mr. Bowden, I will recognize you at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember this incident as if it happened just yesterday when a young lady was murdered by in her grandmother's house there on Long Street. When this resolution was passed years, not years ago, when it was passed, I remember having the mayor to have the city attorney to read, or only by title, but to read the recitals into the record because it was that serious of an incident. And at the time, it was my understanding that the money was going to be used to combat youth crime or violence in the community. Now, I do understand in the past that there were some funds in the budget for this program, independent of, I guess you got some help from Florida Crown. I guess that fund then went away if I, so that went away. Now, I'm not, I don't stand here in opposition to using the fund for that purpose. But I do think that, that the recipients of this and those who participated need to understand where the fund came from. The whole idea is to keep Mariah situation alive so people will know what happened to this young lady over there on Long Street. So that as the program go forward, even at the award program, it need to be stated that these funds come from the Mariah Fund and what the Mariah Fund was created for, so that people will understand the impact of it, because otherwise, we just spending money. I think this money should be spinning away that the community will know what is done and the recipient will know, I'm getting this money as a result of the city council action and it's to let the people know that this young lady was murdered while she was in her house by a drive-by, walk-by shooter, whatever it was. And then, and so that, I guess I'm just suggesting to the city manager to whoever put this on that, that the Mariah Fund be a big part of the program itself so the recipient will know that this ain't just tax dollars, it's also some money that was created for the purpose of combating youth crime in this young lady's name. Did that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Those are all the public comment we had on this one. So we will move into council comments or questions? Ms. Young?
I think it's a great idea. The city and the county, I understand, played a part in this funding for this program. You shaking your head, no?
Mr.?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, yes, sir, that's fine. You want to go before me?
Sure, I can just give you a brief history. 2019, the city funded the police department for the Summer Youth Employment Program. At the time, it was, except for 2020, which was a COVID year, it was a partnership between Florida Crown, the county, and the city. The city and the county both chipped in $25,000. Florida Crown administered it. They did the, the kids worked for Florida Crown. We got the businesses and the city and the county to give the children a place to go. This year, Florida Crown is in flux. Their management team in Lake City was dissolved and absorbed into Gainesville. The Gainesville office is still trying to play catch-up. They could not commit this year to doing the Summer Youth Employment Program. I believe it is a great program. The kids come in, we teach them job skills on Thursdays. They come into the police department. We have different speakers come in, talk to them about how to interview, how to dress, what to do. I think it's a great idea. I didn't think of, Mr. Bowden, to make sure that they're aware that some of the money came from the Mariah Fund. I can certainly make sure that part of the first and last presentation, they're reminded where the money, part of the money came from. Currently, the police department is budgeted for $25,000, which was always our portion of it. Because we're not being partnered with the county or Florida Crown, I asked the city manager if it was all right to take $25,000 from the Mariah Fund, $50,000. That way, we could have twenty children, teenagers, in the program. My feeling was because this money is strictly from the City of Lake City that we restricted this year to residents of City of Lake City. The HR department put out the application. My understanding is we already have more applications than openings. The H R department put out the application. My understanding is we already have more applications than openings. And, uh, all the, uh, individuals will work for city departments. We'll move them around, we'll keep it, and I really believe with the Mariah Fund, getting these, uh, kids off the street, teaching them job skills, really honors the memory of her and it's the reason we put that money into the account. So I'm asking that you do transfer the twenty-five thousand and temporarily add those twenty positions to my manning document.
Thank you, Chief. Best, Mayor.
Yes, and great job. I think you pretty much covered everything. Um.
I practiced that, by the way.
But, uh, um, one thing I, I want to reiterate and I, I spoke this to, um, city manager, that I'm very serious about these summer jobs. Um, that's where I got my start from a summer program. And I got my, I, that's where I got my training. They literally trained me in administration. Um, I was kind of di, um, I guess dissatisfied, um, in certain areas that I went in last summer program because the young people just sat there and watched others work. And this is a great training experience for them and we need to, um, make the best of it. I got a job at the courthouse because I trained in, in summer program. That's, that's where it come from. So that's what we expect from these summer programs. We can actually, um, employ these, these young people in these city offices that we have. So we're training them for us. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm very happy. I didn't know where the other twenty-five thousand was going to come from. I think it's a great idea. I think it's, um, great idea that Mr. Bow, Mr. Bowden said, you know, to know where it comes from. Great introduction to the program. Um, orientation, that being a part of orientation. I just think it's awesome. I thank y'all so much. And I want us to be very serious in the selecting of, of these, these, um, these youths.
Ashley Hardison, my community relations coordinator, has always been involved in the selection. I know H R is going to take a part in it this year. So, and part of it is also if somebody mentions they might, and I'll use law enforcement, if they mention they're interested in a career in law enforcement, we'll work on placing them at the police department. If somebody wants to be with the fire department, we'll work on there or the water department or anything along those lines to try and fit their interests so they can see what the job really is.
Yeah, I'd like to see one of their heads sticking up back there where I T is. Controlling is what comes up on the screen. Thank you.
Might have, uh, child labor violations this late at night. Thank you very much, Chief. Uh, do we have any other comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, um, the, uh, the, the place I, I work, we've had, uh, a kid from this program for many years come work with us and it's always been really great. And, um, just a good opportunity for them to kind of get a little, little taste of the real world and learn a little bit, make a little money. Um, I think it's excellent.
Right. Likewise, we, we have them in our business. We had them at the hospital when I was there. It's been, it's been good. And I see these kids, uh, come back and in the actual workforce now. I get to run into them. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting. All right, anybody, Mr. Jernigan?
Yes, I, I like to echo what everybody else has said here. I mean, that is, it, it, it is definitely going to be, uh, a great program. And, uh, I got, uh, all the confidence in the world that the, uh, chief and the H R will place these people in the, uh, appropriate, uh, job setting. So, um, I just want to say thank you, Chief, uh, for taking on this role. Uh, and the city manager, thank y'all for taking on this role because it's, it is very, very touching and it's very, very important, uh, a role such as this.
Big time, big time. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Six One. Second.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any further discussion, comments? Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Item number twenty-five, City Council Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Six Two. Mr. Martin, please read that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Six Two. Resolution, the City of Lake City, Florida, implementing a moratorium on the acceptance and consideration for approval of applications for mobile home or manufactured home land use applica, or land use actions or permit approvals in the City of Lake City. Excuse me. Making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said moratorium, recognizing the authority of the city to approve said, approve and implement said moratorium, directing the City of Lake City Land Development Regulations Administrator to cease acceptance of new applications for mobile home or manufactured home land use actions or permit approvals as the, as of the effective date hereof, directing the city attorney, city clerk, city manager, and City of Lake City Land Development Regulations Administrative, Administrator official and planning staff to cooperate to prepare an ordinance implementing such moratorium, specifying a duration for such moratorium, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Six Two as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment cards on this one, so we'll move straight to the, uh, council comments.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to ask, uh, growth management what the impetus for this, um, is.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason.
Okay, um, right now we have a lot of mobile homes and manufactured homes coming into the city. We are working, staff is working to address that. Our L D R has a conflict where we can allow some manufactured homes in areas that are supposed to be single-family residences. So that's something we're working on, but in, or until we can get that resolved, we're asking that we have this moratorium. Um, we'll, we do have some mobile homes. These are forty-year-old units who are coming in. They're going in the neighborhoods. We're trying to revive and revitalize and it certainly is not helping our cause.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason.
So, so the goal then is to put a pause on this while we let, we let our zoning catch up?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Thomason?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments, adoptions for City Council Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Six Two?
Mr. Mayor, move, move to approve, uh, City Council Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Six Two.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Carter and Ms. Harris. Um, any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number twenty-six, Discussion of Possible Action Funding Request for Soulful Saturday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll, whenever we get a proposition, we'll open it up for public comment. Is that fair, Mr. Bowden? Because you signed up for this one. Ms. Harris?
Um, we have Mr. Tony Hunt here. Maybe you can come and speak on what, um, Soulful Saturday is.
Mr. Hunt?
Good evening, councilman. Mr. Mayor, uh, Soulful Saturday is, would be basically a come-together day project for the City of Lake City to enhance, uh, the economic development, bringing in, uh, a car show, uh, some national, uh, talent and also some local talent. Just a fun-filled day of, of family, friends and just a unified, uh, collaboration with the City of Lake City and surrounding areas. Uh, the economic impact is, uh, the potential to, from Jacksonville as far as Vought Austin and surrounding counties. So we'd just like to enhance and show people the beauty of Lake City and, uh, nothing really special about it. Just a way for you guys to enhance, make some money and, um, you know, get your city recognized a little bit more throughout the state.
All right.
The event will be, um, as it is right now, we have three, three to four artists.
Yes.
Coming. Um, we wanted to use some local vendors as well as out-of-town vendors that Mr. Tony knows of. Um, a car show and all the amenities that go with it.
Mr. Mayor, what's the ask?
That was my question too. What, the, the ask for the city. What do we, what, what's our part?
You all didn't receive your packets?
I did. But what's, was it, it's funding, I would imagine, funding for the end spaces. Where would it be?
Uh, we're looking at two different places right now, Memorial Stadium and Darby, uh, Pavilion. Uh, uh, we'll, and we're, our top priority is security and, and safety for the public. So if we use Darby, we'll have that fenced off. I haven't gotten that far yet. I was going to have a conversation with the sheriff and fire chief as to what are their requirements and so. But safety is going to be our number one priority. Uh, also with the vendors, we, we're going to position them where if, if we fenced it off, we were going to have armbands and we'll have Q R codes on the armband. So there won't be a lot of running in and out. We'll position the vendors where if you do have to go over, uh, we'll possibly even fence that off also. And the car show will be separate, but we'll have separate armbands for that too.
Ms. Vice Mayor?
You said make money.
Yes, with the city funding this, my job will be just to enhance it and promote it. I'm strictly, I'll be strictly as the promoter, meaning I will do all the legwork for the city, um, enhancing and bringing in, bringing in the, the car show, the vendors, the talent, and there will be a charge and all of the, all of the proceeds will go back to the city.
Mr. Jernigan, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I don't think she's finished.
No, I, he said char, I don't know that we can charge the citizens to come into a event. Can you explain that?
But how, how would, so, talk to us about our, our role, our, our proposed role for, for this event, for clarity.
Well, I'm sorry.
In the, in the finances?
The only thing that we need right now is the funding. And yes, when you invite R and B singers, such, it's a charge. And, and whatever money is made is gonna, we're gonna course pay Mister for his services and then whatever is left over, the city will be, will be the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, there's concerts in the, in town all the time, community concerts, does stuff out of the college. There's, I think I see a car show about once a week somewhere in town. Um, the, I don't, I don't, this is fifty thousand dollars. I don't see any, I don't see any need for this event at all, especially not paying taxpayer money.
So, if I may.
Don't say what now?
You guys are looking at it from a local level. We, we will be inviting people from various areas that love attending car shows, that knows the value of the car shows, that knows the value of the artists and which will enhance revenue, be a deep revenue impact for your hotels, your local vendors, uh, stores. So it's not just a local-type event. We, we want to enhance the beauty of Lake City and bring more people to Lake City. So therefore you guys will possibly have a opportunity for other promoters such as myself to come and do stuff. Not on your dime, of course, but to do stuff and bring other revenue to the city.
I see where, where these events of, um, the Tourism Development Council, they have a, a rule and then Mr. Jernigan's on that of, of trying to attract people from two to two and a half hours away because they're more likely to spend the night, generate bad tax revenues, um, spend their dollars on food, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so I see what you're saying. Mr. Jernigan, you had a question?
Oh, well, I was waiting.
I don't thi, uh. Mr. Hunt isn't, isn't telling you all who he really is. He's not just a fly-by-night person. He actually have in Jacksonville, Florida, I'mma tout it for you because I don't want them to think that we're just bringing somebody in here trying to throw on a little something and charge everybody money. This man makes major money in Jacksonville, Florida, North Carolina and
Yes.
other places. So this isn't his first rodeo.
Yeah.
He has big stuff going on in other places. I want to bring that here in Lake City.
Mr. Carter?
In all fairness, Mr. Mayor, uh, and maybe it's, maybe it's a sales pitch thing, but at the moment, I'm hearing car show and, you know, R and B concert.
It all goes together. It's a full-day thing.
Please give us fifty thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm not seeing it. I don't know of any other concerts that ask the city there and to pay them to have it.
If I may, sir, let me ask you a general question. If you went to a Garth Brooks concert, how much would you think about paying?
I don't know.
Would you pay fifty dollars?
I'm not sure what the relevance is to what I'm saying.
The relevance, the relevance is we're bringing a national stage to Lake City. So, uh, it costs. And not only does it cost, you guys should reciprocate your money in the revenue and also be put on a national stage. So you got guys who have major car shows that we're going to invite and possibly they want to come back and do some more. So it's not a one-off. It's, it's a start of a relationship, basically. You got to start somewhere. So I understand that fifty thousand sounds like a lot of money, but, uh, it costs. You, you can't, I, I sat here earlier and heard you guys talking about fifteen hundred dollars for the fairgrounds and it costs. Anything that you do today costs. And we put together a plan for you guys to recoup your money and also for the city itself, for the, for the vendors, the local businesses, the hotels, to make some money. You know, you guys have a beautiful city. Why the world shouldn't know about it?
To, to Ms. Young's, um, question earlier or comment, um, if the city, the city putting money forward and then charging citizens, but this is more targeted to folks from outside of the city coming in, is that right?
Well, it's targeted to everyone, but, um, it would be more so people from other areas, bringing them in to enhance revenue for the City of Lake City.
And, and the projection, just looking at the numbers, was, um, three thousand, three thousand tickets sold, right? Or two thousand, sorry, two thousand tickets sold at forty dollars apiece. There's other revenue, uh, projections on there uh, to make money back and help cover the costs. And then there's a revenue share on the tickets, is that right? Or how does that go?
Yes, and, and we're currently still in negotiations with that.
Okay.
My, my objective, let me, my, uh, she was explaining some of my resume. I'm currently getting ready to do a rodeo in Jacksonville, Florida. Um, we do this, this is the fourth year and have access of probably ten thousand people. Uh, I can look on my analytics with the promotion, the style of promotion that I do. We have people purchasing tickets from New York City, California, Dallas, you know. Uh, I'm sure everybody's hearing this new line dance craze that's going around. So we're, we're talking about bringing some of these artists in here that's going to bring people to your city.
Does, on, on the events in Jacksonville, does Visit Florida or, um, like maybe Visit Duval or, or something, do they, do they help cover the cost of that because the people are coming from outside the area?
No, that's strictly on my dime.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what I, that's what we choose to do. But I have other events. Now, I have worked with other cities before and it's, they have been pretty successful. So all I can say to you guys, I, I wish you guys would adopt this and, and bring your city to a new light. I, I, I had a chance to ride your city. I think it's a beautiful city, but it's kind of one of the best-kept secrets. And we like to, you know, expose that a little bit more. And fifty thousand dollars compared to building a relationship, I think that's kind of minimum.
Can I, can I ask you one more question before I turn it over to our, um, go to, to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jernigan? The upfront cost, the cost to the city would be forty-nine, seven hundred and that's it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jernigan?
You, you know, I, I would love to see, you know, you guys coming in and, uh, help promoting, you know, the City of Lake City. I would love to do that. Uh, however, uh, I, I, I think, you know, asking the city for money would be a little bit, uh, you, how, how do, how do, how do we recoup that money? And we, let's say for example, we gave you fifty thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we, we can't just, well, I said, I wouldn't just do that.
Okay.
Unless you gave me line by line, uh, two thousand Un- unless you gave me line by line, uh, two thousand for Garth Brooks, two thousand for Michael Jackson, two thousand for this. Line by line.
There's a budget there.
Okay, this, this, listen to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. And still after that. Uh, I would look at that and say fifty thousand, uh, that is a lot of money. Of what would I get back in return for that fifty thousand? Yeah, it's good to build a relationship. I feel like I got a relationship with you right now. I don't even know who you are. Uh, you, you presenting yourself very, very well. Um, I just think that if you went to a different entity. Like the TDC and request funding like that, I think you have a better, uh, uh. A, a better turnout, a better look, uh, because, yeah, they do give money. But people, uh, they pretty much get that money back through hotels and, uh, uh, vendors and things like that, so. Uh, I, I, I just don't think that, uh, that the city is in a, um, in a situation. Where we could just save fifty thousand and then you, you take off a- at this time. Now, a- and again, I don't know everything. I'm not the smartest person up here. We got some very, very smart, intelligent people up here, right? So, uh, and again, I, I feel like I've built that relationship with you. And I would definitely like to see, uh, what you're working with, you know what I mean? Uh, so, uh, but fifty thousand is something that I, you know, the, the, you know, we, we got peoples around here. You know, they can't buy a loaf of bread hardly, you know, they can't pay their rent. And then we, we're taking that money, cause it's not, it's not my money. It's the citizens' money. We taking that money and, uh, giving that to you and then just hoping that it turns out. Uh, a- as planned. Uh, I, I just, you know, I just can't see it right now.
And I, I understand every word that you just said to me, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You look like a very respectful man. You go to church every Sunday, don't you?
No, not every Sunday, but I do go.
But you go to church in hoping. And with that being said is every, everyone goes to a function. That it costs, whether it's at church, whether it's at wherever, it costs. To put on a, a, a nice event, this is not. Billy and his friends doing something here that's local. We're bringing in national artists, which brings national attention, which brings people from other cities. It costs. Now, those numbers that was put out. All I've, I've heard since I've been standing up here is fifty thousand. No one has asked the real question. What does it stand to make? It's, it's, everyone is afraid to give, but you have to give in order to get. So. I think if you looked at the projection, I think you have the projection, sir.
Yeah, they're, they were in our packet. Mister, Mister Carter did have a question. Was it pertaining to this?
I just wanna say one last thing on this, uh, and then I, I won't, I won't say anything else. Um. If a boxing promoter can't afford to pay for his event, they go out of business, go out of business all the time. Promoting things is the thing. I don't blame you at all for, uh, asking, you know, you can't, can't hurt to ask. Um, uh, cause of course it was, it was certainly cover the cost or the risk, right, of doing an event because what is there, what, what? What do we stand to gain? Uh, well, maybe it makes a hundred thousand dollars and we get to split it down the middle and that's awesome, or maybe it makes nothing. Um, you know, I, so what I would say is I invite you to come to the city and book any of our wonderful locations and put on an event. And I hope that that happens, but I'm, I for one am in no, no, no interest at all in paying a company fifty thousand dollars to put on an event for us.
Think we have a little miscommunication. Yeah, it wasn't my idea. I was approached to bring light. To the city. So, I mean.
I apologize. If I got something mixed up, but I, I understood that he said on his dime, he put on events in, in another town.
When I, yeah, when I do shows, I, I, I spend my own money. I was approached and, and this was an idea. Uh, I got together the numbers. And the numbers are what they are. Unfortunately, they're not ten dollars, they're not fifteen there, fifty thousand. You know?
Fair enough. Well, to my fellow council members, it is my opinion that this is not a responsible way to spend taxpayer money. Thank you.
Miss Harris.
The city gives out money all the time and don't get anything back from it. And this is an opportunity for us to give some money and to possibly get something back. And you said it's, you're saying it's not a good idea?
Miss Harris, in all fairness, I pretty consistently argue against most of that spending. I think we give out a lot of money we shouldn't.
Oh, cause you did vote against doing the houses.
You said you did this in other cities. What other cities?
Uh, Jacksonville, uh, we did something down Palacca, uh, do a lot of stuff up north. Um, so. If superfriendsent.com, if you guys wanna check our resume.
I wouldn't have enough, enough, uh, information to support this tonight.
And, and I can understa- I can understand what you guys, the reluctance that y'all have, so if there's. Something that I can walk each and every one of you through to show you how it works and, um. Cause I've, I've sat down with a few of your, uh, city people and I understand that you guys do do. A lot of free concerts. And that budget is somewhere in that general area anyway. I just don't really see, as Councilwoman says, I just don't see why. This is, this is basically like a uni- unity fest. You're bringing local people. And people from outside together, black, white, you know, all races, creed, colors. And you stand to make a few dollars.
My interest is because it, it's, it mirrors an event that has happened in the last twelve months, so that's why. Um, I would like, I, I just need more information on, on the enterprise itself and, and some of the things that you've put on, so. That would be, that would be my process.
Two weeks ago. No, you had every opportunity to do research as well as all the council members up here. And to get up here and you're making an assessment off of a number, you haven't even checked out the stuff to see what happened, what he has done.
With all due respect, Miss Harris, uh, this was a seven hundred page, uh, this was a seven hundred page agenda. I'd, and I went through it and there was nothing about any other events, uh, anywhere else. There was a budget. Fairness to, to the council and, and to you. Uh, there was a explanation of what this would be, what the mission is. There's no other comparison of what has been done, so.
If you knew that he was, what it is, sofa. Sure. Go and do some research to find out.
Mister Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
We sent a invitation to every last person up here and asked that y'all RSVP. We were gonna highlight Lake City. I'm asking as the CEO for you guys to accept that invitation and just come see how we work. And I'm, I'mma show you a show that costs about three hundred thousand dollars. And you're gonna see that what I'm asking is, you know. And if you guys, just for the sake of time. Approve it, but approve it with stipulations for now. Come see what we got to offer and we'll come back to the table. I want each and every one of you guys to feel very comfortable. With the dollars that I'm spending. I do understand that this is taxpayers' money. So, and I don't wanna spend one dollar that is not warranted. And if we can trim that budget, I'd be more than happy to trim the budget, but what we're asking is for our opportunity.
I would, I'd prefer to table this decision myself. Again, this item was added, I think, Thursday or Wednesday last week. It wasn't. It was added Thursday last week. I don't have enough information to make a decision tonight. I'd rather table it.
Fair.
That's me, and I'm one of five.
Um, because we had an event on yesterday and was a great event. Young people had a great time. And of course you can't pu- you, they're gonna, so, you're gonna have pros and cons. Some are gonna be very happy about it and some are gonna be displeased about it. But there were so many people. Where would the security even come from for all those people? We don't have the manpower. We're in Lake City.
Well, that is, that is part of the fifty thousand. Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna cost thirty thousand. No, I'm serious. Did you just hear what she said? If you feel like there, it's gonna have that many people back in Lake City, you're not counting up the dollars.
Let's just say if we charge twenty dollars per person and you have all, even half of those people come to Lake City. You're gonna make your money back plus a lot more.
I don't, well, I said in the beginning, I don't like the idea of charging the citizens to come in. That, that's the first thing, but I was just thinking about. Yesterday and a crowd like yesterday, and you, three times that?
Well, wh- when was the last time you went to a nice place for free?
Well, I, if, if I can't, if I don't wanna afford it, I just don't go there.
Okay, but, I understood, but it, but there's a charge. And, and to answer your se- to answer your security question, um, I actually was. Uh, trying to get in touch with the sheriff to find out what was the stipulation and regulations and from there. I have a JSO officer on my team. So anywhere that I go, he gets with the local municipality. And we regulate security. So we, we come self-contained. We have, we have police officers. I have people with the JFRD that. Talks with the, the, uh, municipality, wherever we at. We come in and we obey the laws. So if we feel like, you know, that the park said if the capacity is fifteen hundred, that's what we shoot for. No more, no less, and we handle security accordingly. So the security issues. That's, that's like a trivial question to us because we believe in safety first. Especially when I, my rule is when I go out of town, I like to go home. So that is a main priority for me.
Thank you, Mister Hunt. Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Mister Mayor, just real quick, I, my ears perked up whenever I heard about the invitation to attend, uh, the event. Um, that's something I, I would like if anybody intends to, uh, possibly accept that. Get with me so we can take a look at the gift laws and make sure that it doesn't exceed an acceptable value. It doesn't mean that you, you can't do something to. To be able to attend. It just means that we may have some boxes to check to make sure that no one, uh, runs afoul of an ethics, uh, law. There, I would hate to see someone do that and, and there be a report.
Be kidding me. You gotta be kidding me because when I first started this, that was one of the first things I asked about. So, a- and, and to get in here and you seem like you, this is your first time hearing of this, you gotta be kidding. Got to be.
A- as, as to the invitation to attend a similar event that's not this event. This is the first I'm hearing of that. It's not the first I've heard of the, the idea of having an event like this in Lake City. We talked about that, but. If, if you're being invited and being gifted a, a ticket or admission to go to another event. We just need to make sure that it, it's possible you can accept it. I just need to look at the valuations on it, so it depends on what the valuation is.
From my understanding, there, there are no laws to be broken because we are highlighting the city of Lake City. We are, we are actually planning on, uh, we have a concert that Friday night. We were actually gonna bring you guys up and highlight y'all's city as far as for tourism. And, and, and celebrate the city of Lake City, so.
At, at this event?
At, yes, at my event in June.
The July, the night, nineteen.
The one I have in Jacksonville in June.
The one you're having in Jacksonville, and, and I just need to, I just need to look at it. That's all I'm saying is I need to look at it. I wanna make sure. I don't want you to get in trouble. I don't want them to get in trouble. I just wanna look at it, make sure.
Okay.
That's it.
Mister Carter, you had some?
I, I, I just want.
I didn't see, I saw him first and then I'll come back to you.
I just wanna say, uh, to, to Councilwoman Harris, uh, to be clear, cause I'm sure the reception to this is frustrating to you. Um, and, and I feel for you in that regard. I understand your, your, your feeling is you wanna bring a big event to the city and it makes, and it's, and it's, and it's a good event. I'm still, I'm still, it's, it's. Um, but to be clear, I, I do, I really wanna emphasize, this specific thing in this specific way is very odd. When he holds events in Jacksonville, Jacksonville isn't paying him to do it. That, and when, and to be clear, to, to bounce off of Councilwoman Young's point. If the city is gonna take taxpayer money and put on an event, pay to put on an event for its citizens. Uh, it's not generally something, uh, that I've seen where we then charge the citizens. They paid for the event. So, I, no, none of this, none of the, having a big event is an awesome idea. Encouraging promoters to come to the city, rent one of our, our locations and put on the event. Even helping them, helping them promote the event to some degree or another. All terrific things, but this particular thing is, is, is rather strange. And I, and I, 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 I'm not, to be clear, I don't think anyone here is against the idea of having a lovely event that brings lots of people to our city. We all want that. But this particular thing is unusual. Um, and, and I think that Mister Martin is, is very correct on the. On the, 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 the gifting side of thing. If, if any of us did go to it, we should absolutely pay full price, it seems to me. Thank you.
Mister Jernigan?
Um, yeah, I, I was gonna ask you this, uh, this event you're having in Jacksonville, you're inviting us to come to. Uh, how much is one of the tickets?
Well, one particular night was like eighty dollars.
So one night is eighty, the, uh, so it's, it's three day event, right?
Two day event.
I mean, a two day event.
Yes.
So it's like, uh, one sixty?
A, 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 a weekend package. We have several events throughout the weekend, so a weekend package is about two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars, okay. Um, so, uh, and you were just gonna like, uh, give us a, an admission?
Yes. We, we, we were gonna, we were gonna highlight you guys. And also give y'all the opportunity to see what we do, how we do it. And perhaps in the latter part of next year sometime, even bring similar events here.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so I.
On my dime.
Right. I, I would like to, uh, uh, to take on, uh, uh, that, you know, to come in and see. Exactly what you're doing and how you're doing it. And, uh, uh, but I would have to pay. I, I don't like people gifting me anything.
You ain't gonna hurt my feelings.
So I'd rather pay, uh, uh, the price than you give it to me. I'd get in trouble for that. That's basically what happens to me. Uh, no, nothing happened to you, uh, but I could get in serious trouble for that. So, yeah, I would like to come and. I purchase a ticket, just like every other citizen that comes to Jacksonville and just see how, uh, just how it going, uh, you know. I, I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, the same thing happened in Jacksonville, happens in Lake City, vice versa, but I'd just like to see. Um, you know, just, just exactly what you're working with. Uh, seems to be, um, uh, very good. You, you get all these people from all over the world that come in here and the car shows and food trucks and, and artists and, you know. Uh, you know, that seems to be a pretty good, uh, thing going on nowadays, you know? So I, I seen a couple of, um, events, uh, but, uh, I just want you to understand something very, very clear. Then this is coming from me, you know, the other, other councils may think differently or whatever, that's fine. But the, the, the security here is, is top priority for our citizens, man. Uh, I mean, it's top priority and things happen. You, you, we don't plan for those things, but it, they just happen, you know, so. Uh, I was glad that you said something about you was gonna get with the sheriff department. Uh, you need to get with, not the fire chief, but the chief of police, uh. Uh, back there, uh, Mister Butler, and you know, you know, talk to those, cause I'm telling you, they know exactly what goes on here in Lake City, in my opinion. Uh, so they know what's best for Lake City, especially when you having, uh, a, a few thousand people come in here, it's gonna, it's gonna be rough.
And I understand that. And that was part of our initiative, but we had to get past this part first.
So I appreciate you.
And I, I would appreciate it if you paid to. How about it?
Let's, uh, bring this conversation in, in for a landing, or is this something that we, we wanna take action on tonight or? I thought, again, I think it's a good initiative. We've had something like this in the past twelve months. I don't, I'm with Miss Young in that. If we pay for it, we can't charge them, so, um, I, I think there's a little more vetting out to be done. I don't, I don't think we're ready for action tonight, myself. It's my thoughts.
Table it for the future.
Yeah, we can table it.
I'm gonna agree in with, uh, I'm gonna agree with you, uh, Mayor.
Well, someone would have to make a motion to table and also when it would expect to be untabled. Table indefinitely or table until?
In two weeks. That'll give you guys time enough to go and do the research that you said you need to have.
I don't need that. I've, I've done it.
So you did research on him?
Yes.
I would say for our May nineteenth, our May nineteenth agenda, if we're gonna bring it back on, that's what I would do. I mean, just to be, to be fair.
But I'm thinking about you have to get our advertisement and all that.
I, I know, I've, I've, I'm in the marketing and advertising field. This, you sh-. Usually these ramp up. This, each, usually these ramp up about a month and a half, two months ago on the advertising with the tickets and everything like that. We're already, we're, right, we're already on a short string.
Yeah, you definitely on a short string, however, the community that we advertise to, they, they're always looking. So, um, I would employ that you guys could make a decision by then, if not before then. Um, so that we can move forward because if you are in advertising, you do know the planning that goes in it.
For sure, yeah.
And one thing, and I, I know Councilwoman is really passionate about this, maybe you can drop it down, some of the artists, you got three artists?
Well, yes, it's four, but actually, that, that is what I'm, that's, that was what I said earlier. We asked for the fifty because we were bringing in national artists and other things, but believe it or not, a lot of your cost is in your staging, your security, your this and your that. The, the artist is kinda miniscule, that's probably fifteen percent of, of the budget. Maybe twenty. We can cut back on, definitely. We can, we can do it a whole different way if y'all like, but.
We did it that way, we really wouldn't need the production, the producer.
There you go.
Now, we're doing concerts now and what, less than fifteen?
There you go, so.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Or, or suggest an action?
I'm making a motion to you suggest it table till May.
Either the next meeting or the one after, I just know the one after is gonna be as long as this one in terms of items.
Any suggestions, Councilwoman?
So you wanna table it until May fifteenth, why does it have to take that long?
It doesn't, again, we, we can do May fifth, um, it's our next meeting, it's going to be as long as this one, easily.
So it's the number that bo, that's bothering you guys that?
It's, it's my, it's my lack of knowledge on these events, it's my lack of knowledge on how they've done with other communities. Uh, I think that there are other stakeholders that we could engage, like the T D C who, who actually lay out up to twenty thousand dollars for events to come into town if they're going to attract people from out of the area. Um, there's, there's a lot of things that could go into this between now and then.
Well, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to work with you guys to, so you guys can have an informed decision. And, uh, as I said before, I think you guys are the, uh, best kept secret. And, you know, I would love to be fighting over doing shows in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. So we had, you were making a motion, does anybody wanna make a motion or do we just wanna table it and just revisit it next time?
I believe tabling would require a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, that's correct.
I'd like to make, make a motion to table it to, to, till May, is that May fifth?
It's the first meeting, yes.
May fifth.
That's second.
A motion in a second, any, now I'll open it up to public comment. So, Mr. Bowden, you're the only person to sign up for public comment on this one, we'll have public comment and then we'll come back for council comment and then we'll vote.
Well, that was a long discussion there, I must say. I do have a concern, and as a taxpayer, if you're gonna use taxpayers' money upfront for fifty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money, and then you're gonna charge me to come to the event also. So I'm paying for it twice, I'm paying for it as a taxpayer that I'm paying to get in, I got some concern about that. The other concern I have is that I don't think there's enough information being provided to the public for us to have an appreciation that this is a good investment. I would like to know the, the events that a gentleman put on in the past, the success of it, all of that, that's not in the package. You know, I'm not opposed to it, but I share the message with you that if I was sitting there, I would not be comfortable with the information that's being presented here tonight and what's in the package. When it first was put on, I didn't see anything in the package, that, any supporting documents in the package. Then, then it came on later cuz I saw where she sent the, added to number twenty-six. When the package first came out, there was no supporting documents in the package at all. I'm just talking from, from the public point of view, I think that the public need more information when you're gonna talk about spending fifty thousand dollars upfront. I'm not saying it won't be a good investment, but I certainly wanna know what happened in Palacca, what kind of event was in Palacca? Uh, there was two, uh, two venues mentioned, Dobby Provision and Memorial Stadium. Uh, a couple of thousand people to a car show and a, uh, R B thing at Dobby Provision. In my mind, I just can't see how that can work, I can't see the parking working, I, I just can't see how that can work. It may work at Memorial Park, but I'm not interested in determining where it goes at. But I do have some concern about fifty thousand dollars upfront, and I got some concern that if I spend fifty thousand dollars of my money through the tax, to, to taxes, and I gotta spend another twenty dollars to get in, then what's the benefit to the city of Lake City? After you spend fifty thousand dollars, and there's no guarantee that we, it's gonna be successful, you can have a rain problem, anything can go wrong. So, I think we need more information, if I was gonna say, I would want more information, period, you know? And that, that's where I'm coming from, I'm, I'm not opposed to the concept, but I don't think there's enough information here to, to, to spend fifty thousand dollars without knowing the track record, and there's nothing in the package that shows what the gentleman's track record has been.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. All right, we've had public discussion, I'm gonna close public discussion, we've had, uh, a lot of council discussion, do we have any more comments, questions? Before we vote? Uh, the motion is to table this discussion until May fifth, twenty twenty-five, which is our next meeting. Um, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan? Mr. Carter?
Nay.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, uh, now we'll move on to departmental administration, comments by charter officers, starting with you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Uh, we are, we are discussing, uh, the possibility with the county of maybe providing some additional, uh, service involving, uh, either sewer or water uh, to, to, um, another community. And as this discussion develops, whether it actually happens or whether it's just a discussion, I will let you know as, as it develops. If it does get to the point where we wanna do it, we'll bring it back to, uh, the council, we'll brief everybody before we come to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Martin.
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, Ms. Sykes.
Oh, no comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes, now we're going to move on to council member comments, uh, starting with Vice Mayor Young.
Okay, yes, um, I want to mention something and I want the council to, to, to hear me out on this. I've, I've asked Mr. Rosenthal, and I don't know where he is with it, but when we talked about Blanche Hotel, um, we pay reoccurring monthly an amount for Ban, Blanche Hotel, still. Y'all hear me? I want that contract, I want somebody to go through that contract and hopefully there's a loophole somewhere because it's not right.
Thirty-two thousand a month is what we pay.
Thirty-two thousand dollars a month and we gotta rent that building, something's wrong with that. And even if we didn't have to rent it, it's something wrong with that altogether. And just preferably there's a loophole somewhere that we can get out of it. How far are you on it?
It's that thick.
We need, we need to take, take the time and get through that contract.
Mayor, can I ask something, Ms. Sykes?
Ms. Angie, Ms. Angie was trying to speak to it.
We're required by the contract.
Will you speak into the microphone?
We're required by the contract, uh, it's thirty-five thousand a month, but it's based on the commercial. So if they have everything rented out, we don't pay anything, and several months, we haven't paid anything. And it's all reimbursable back to the city with interest.
We shouldn't have to pay nothing at no time.
So for seven months, we haven't been paying anything?
There's been several months that we haven't paid anything.
How many times have we paid?
Many times.
Contract review.
Thank you, Ms. Young, anything else?
Oh, I did have one other thing, um, concerning the, um, the event on yesterday, um, I drove through, there were a lot of people. And, um, I don't remember what time it was, but it was probably one hour, maybe an hour before the incident, and there were so many people, I recognized maybe three people. So that lets me know there were a lot of people from out of town. Um, and I, I like to see young people have a good time. And as I stated earlier, there're gonna be some who like it, there's gonna be some who dislike it. I got a lot of calls through the night of people who were complaining. Um, the noise was so loud, the people were afraid, um, because of the, the crowd. And I can understand that, those people who, who live, you know, in that area. Um, so I just believe we, what, there has to be a solution, I'm not saying don't do it. But we've gotta come to some type of solu, something, we gotta come to some type. I spoke with the, um, program coordinator, and she's very good at coordinator, she probably need to produce this event. I'm serious, um, she's awesome at what she does and she did tell me that, I said, what can we do to make it better? Um, not better fun, you know, but, um, there was evidently something that, there has to be a change to be made. So she said, I, I do understand that and I know where it is. Um, and she say, I've spoken with the, with the ca, with the board and, um, we're going to come to hopefully an agreement as to at the next event, it will be more organized, is the word she used. Um, but, you know, it's one of those things where you like to see people have fun, but you want the residents to not have to suffer in their own homes. So where do you, what do you do, where do you draw the line? So we'll think on that and that was at the event, the event, but.
Yesterday, yeah, and, and Animatics, thank you, Ms. Young, um, moving on to council comments from Mr. Jernigan.
Oh, um, I like to read this letter from Gordon, uh, uh, Garden Streak. Uh, I'm writing you, uh, a note and appreciation for Mr. Don Rosenthal, Steve Brown, and Brian Scott. They have done tremendously job helping us work through the citizens, the city approval process for our, uh, home project. Uh, I thought that was a mighty good gesture that, that, uh, uh, that he wrote uh, and on the behalf of, uh, Mr. Rosenthal, Brian Scott, and Steve Brown. So I, I just thought that was, uh, that was a very, very good letter. Uh, the other thing is, um, uh, uh, you know, I'm all about, uh, policing and, and, uh, um, having, uh, the tools that these officers really need to control, um, situations and circumstances. And, uh, sometimes, um, we, we just can't do enough to, to protect the citizens, and my heart goes out, you know, I've always told, uh, the chief, and I don't care who, who's the chief, uh, assistant chief, uh, make sure those officers go home at the end of the day. Uh, I just hate to have an officer injured, uh, especially when you've been in that field your whole career. Uh, you, you won't understand unless you've been in that, uh, that field your whole career, uh, law enforcement. Those officers gotta go home to their family, to their kids, their wives, husbands, they got to go home. Uh, in situations like took place yesterday, uh, I, I just thought that, uh, it was a, 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 a great gathering. And, until at the end, I, I just can't figure out exactly what transpired, what triggered it. Uh, but I, I, I'm hoping that we get to the bottom of it and we can solve, you, you know, the problem over there, uh, whenever we have an event. Cuz it, it could be at one of the, uh, Circle K, uh, uh, gas stations, it could be at the Chevron gas station there. Uh, cuz they leave one place and go to another, we, I, I, I mean, I don't even know who these people are. Uh, and I, I've been here sixty-seven years and I was raised, uh, right there at that particular park. So, um, I, my, my heart goes out to that officer and his family, uh, uh, for the whole Lake City, uh, Police Department. Uh, my prayers and thoughts are with you guys, so keep up the work, I know it's a tough job. And, um, you know, giving your life or, uh, for, for, you know, for a job like this is, is, uh, is very, very important. Uh, so, uh, please, again, let's take care of, uh, uh, citizens as well as our first responders, and, uh, that's so, so important to me, and, and, and take care of all of our, all of our people, you know? Uh, that's, that's just so important to me, man, uh, I, I almost wanted to cry yesterday when I heard about that stuff, you know? So, uh, that's it, that's all I got, you know?
Thank you, Councilman Jernigan, uh, Councilman Carter.
Yep, I wanna talk about the same thing, the event at Animatics Park. It seems, and I've ta, I've heard from a ton of people, seen quite a bit of videos online at, at, at this point. Um, it, and one of the things I heard, we're just talking about just general functionality of an event like this, is that the streets in and around the park itself were virtually unusable. Uh, generally, if an event is going to have something in the streets, there's some sort of process for closing off road, providing detours, all that kinda stuff. I don't, it doesn't seem like any of that was done, there were just people all throughout the streets, people couldn't get down the roads. Uh, that in and of itself is a pretty serious problem. Also, the event itself, and again, I, I'm in the same camp as Ms. Young is, is not, not having any problems with young people having fun, that's, that's, that's wonderful. Uh, it's, it's out of park after all, but the event does seem to some degree to be tantamount to like a festival. And generally speaking, places that have festivals also have fences, walls, trees, barriers, space away from roads and things like that. So, uh, I know that, uh, I understand correctly, there's a, there's an expectation that there'll be an event very similar to this in like three weeks. Um, obviously, and I've been told too that this, this party tends to get a little, little wild every year. This is the first time someone's been shot, but it's, it's frequently difficult for law enforcement from what I understand. Um, so I don't know if we need to look at code, uh, to see if there's any sort of rules that can be applied specifically to the event or to the location to keep people out of the streets. Uh, you know, something, some, some, something to deal with parking, cuz in addition to that, you're having just tons of people from out of town filling the streets with, with cars, filling the streets with, with people. Um, but I know that it, it, it's, it's not, um, it seems that not unlikely that in a few weeks, we may have a repeat of this to some degree or another. So, um, I, I would, I'd love to see, uh, code enforcement, police chief, city manager kinda come together and see if there's anything that we can kinda get out ahead of this one next time and then perhaps plan much better for, uh, Easter in the future. And obviously, the park can't put up a fence in the next two weeks, I'm sure, but you, you, we can't have an event, it's, it's right in the middle of a neighborhood. That's not where festivals go either generally for the noise and so on and so forth. So, I, I, I think it'd be nice if, if we can kinda put our heads together and see if there's, is something we can do to potentially mitigate, uh, it getting out of hand next time.
Thank you, thank you, Council, Councilman Carter.
Ms. Carter, uh, ma, may I, uh, this is not the first time somebody's got shot out there.
Oh, well, there you go, all the more reason to figure something out.
Councilwoman Harris.
Chief Butler. Somebody tagged me in a post and I want you to know what they said. Lake City Police Department did their thing today, I felt secure and safe all day with my daughter and the crowds. I don't care about the negative, it was a great day today. We had record-breaking turnout at the park today, thanks for visiting our city and coming experiencing Easter twenty twenty-five with our Lake City, Florida community. So, you got some people out there that appreciate your police department, so it should be noted.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris, I appreciate your police department majorly, um, prayers to Officer Hardison. Uh, hopefully his life isn't forever changed by that incident yesterday. Um, I, I would say that, um, it's a public, or it's a private park, uh, which, which is baffling to me. It's a lot of liability there, and what I would say, uh, to that board and to the owners of that park is you're opening yourself up to major, major liability, both from the folks who live around that, that park and the folks who are affected at that park. Uh, I would, I wouldn't be surprised if there are major lawsuits just from destruction, um, or altering of life that occurred yesterday. Um, and hope not, because it is, it is, uh, a lot of people, um, uh, get utility out of that park, there's a lot of kids that play there, uh, it's important, it's important for the community. Um, I would like to recognize a few people who were recognized at the employment, uh, recognition luncheon last week. Uh, it was, uh, pretty, pretty spectacular. Um, there are many, many employees who are fifteen years and over, so I'm just gonna read them out. Uh, you got Michael, uh, De Castillo, Edward Benel, Ed who's in the house tonight, fifteen years, thanks, Ed. Uh, Michael is a, uh, one of your folks, chief, so, um, Uh, Michael is a, uh, one of your folks, chief, so, um, hats off to him. You've got, uh, Kim Moore, uh, from Public Works, one of your, your people, Steve, she's got twenty years. Uh, also Kevin Parlotti, twenty years. Audrey Sykes, here sitting next to me, twenty-five years of service to the city, uh, huge, huge achievement. Uh, you've got only two people ahead of her and, and Joe Sheldon and Gass, another one of your folks, Steve. And then, um, Teresa Phillips, who is, uh, under you, uh, Mr. Rosenthal. So, uh, good job to Terry, who's got thirty-five years of service, incredible, so that's in, incredible. Uh, thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Lake City and that's all I got to say tonight, so this is adjourned.